How was your day?
Um, my day was rather... It started at three thirty this morning.
Well, it wasn't that time to get up?
Well, when I hear my tone being at three thirty this morning, my first thought was, oh, my kids are something wrong. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It is because, I don't know why, it's just, I always feel like the kids, like if they're out or they're somewhere else and, I don't know, it's just the mom, the mom. But I would not probably comfort her if I was sound asleep, but for somebody who the dog was active last night. She just went three o'clock, I was actually outside of her. And then she came in and I think it's not like all of them were asleep. And then I know and I missed.
How did that go?
And, well, I had the backseat and I didn't feel very well with the back.
Oh.
Yeah. It was good to do it and I just couldn't remember what all of it.
Am I correct in assuming that there will be some public participation?
No, there will be some consideration tonight for public participation.
Okay.
Because this is the last one.
Okay.
So I will open it up before public participation, ten minutes. Different colors, all of the stuff that we approved that we were in accord with the budget, with the financial.
I want to say yes. I assume that nobody will question that if we're going through accepting that budget the way it is, so. I don't know how I will address if there's a question or something that comes up if the budget's already been approved, basically what board is.
I made a rubber.
A punch right on.
A punch right on.
Punch?
A punch right on. I have to tell you, almost embarrassed. I've worked with this guy for thirty years, I didn't even know his name, that's what. That's why. Doesn't realize you have a real name.
Someone's coming with a sign.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Budget Committee and the Finance Committee. There will be public participation tonight since this is the last budget meeting that we're going to have for this particular budget. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, with public participation, we're going to allow ten minutes, two minutes per. We're hoping to run through this budget fairly quick this evening, I think most, everything has been looked over carefully. We're going to go by departments and hopefully our committee here will take a vote and then we'll give it to the Finance Committee, they'll do the same. If there are any questions, we'll entertain them then, and then we will. Any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
Just for clarification, now that the Finance Committee has gone over the budget, I'm just curious as to how much emphasis the Board of Selectmen needs to put on the recommendations of the Finance Committee?
In what manner?
Well, assuming that the Finance Committee brings any cuts, if you will, to any particular budget, how much emphasis will the Board of Selectmen be putting on that?
Yep, go ahead, Dan. So the way that the process works is that we're going to start with a particular department. Doug, the Chair, is going to ask, you know, we're going to consider the governing body budget for reasons. Are there any questions or concerns about a particular item in this budget? If there are one or more, we'll talk about that, there'll be discussion open between the Finance Committee and the Board. There may be some adjustments needed, there might be, might end up being whatever it is. At the end of it all, there may be, we might see some sort of consensus between the two boards, the Board and Committee. At that point, after brief discussion on particular items, you know, Doug will, this board will be ready to act. They will consider the discussion and decide whether or not they want to increase or decrease or whatever. At that time, we would entertain a motion, once we've gone through one of the line items that might be of interest for discussion. Once that's done, you know, we will ask this board for a recommendation to approve the department budget. The first, the second, a motion, a show of hands, and then we'll turn it over to the Finance Committee and they'll make their recommendation. So it's possible that, you know, we'll have some departments that were in full consensus and it's possible that we'll have departments that were not in full consensus, and so the Finance Committee will have to vote. We may have some articles that are fully recommended by both, we may have some articles that are recommended here but not recommended by them. And so the goal, I guess, is to consider what they have to say on the items that they have that are of interest to them in each of the departments. Consider that here by this board, the board puts the number in, and then we act, and then we act, and then we move on to the next department.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's start off. Governing body, Department 100.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I would recommend that your departments here, I know that we're going to have some discussion because of, on intergovernmental chambers here. And also, at some point, under Social Services budget, the Historical Society representative will be here. And so, I'm...
Is she?
Oh, she's here. So I think that if we would consider perhaps passing those budgets first.
Okay.
Working on those.
So the first one that we'd like to go to would be what?
I would just say at this point, we would look at the intergovernmental budget.
Intergovernmental, that's what, seven, ten?
Yes.
Again, Department 710, do we, referring to the Board now, do we have any issues with this department?
Um, I don't have an issue, what, did you... The recommendations from the Finance Committee, like, do you have those handy, Chris?
I didn't, I wouldn't, I didn't know we were going to do this stuff in this way. I have, well, the notes that we have gathered that came in the email.
Yeah, so for this department?
I understand, Dan, I know you've been out of kind of touch and stuff, if you get the email with the recommendations, if you have a chance, you can do it.
No, no.
So...
You had sent out the...
This is over here.
So I'll lead off here, the intergovernmental budget, I believe that the only item for discussion right now is the Chamber request, correct me if I'm wrong. Do we like if I'm missing something? There was some discussion at the Finance Committee, about fifteen thousand dollar request, and I think that their consensus was that they were comfortable with it. Ten thousand, if I'm not speaking hot enough, please let me know, I do kind of start hiding low, so. So that would be the, in my recollection of the Finance Committee discussion, the only thing in this budget here that we're going to need to discuss further. We have Sharon from Chamber here to talk, and I will talk also as well for what the town's future collaborations with the Chamber. We can try to bolster, or try to give you as much information as we can so that you can all make a decision with all the information available. So with that said, Sharon, feel free to grab a seat here with us. Chamber has requested fifteen thousand dollars this year. This is a tough year for the Chamber. They lost two big revenue drivers, the Chamber at the Topamane Trade Show and the Town Citywide Flea Market. And the town is working on a collaborative agreement as well. We collaborated with them on the boost program, which was super successful and put a lot of money into the hands of local businesses utilizing the Chamber's resources. And we're looking to continue a different kind of collaboration with the Chamber, different from anything we've ever seen before. And so, you know, our plan, what we're going to do here is we're going to be drafting a memorandum of understanding or an agreement to collaborate or a resolve, whatever you want to call it, that sets the terms for what our collaboration is going to be to generate economic activity in our town. We're going to work hand in hand, if this, you know, if we can, work hand in hand with the Chamber. We're going to have a group agreement in writing in place that is going to be considered by the Chamber Board, is going to be considered by this board. And if we come to some sort of mutual agreement, that will be our guidance moving forward. So it's a bit of a pilot project, if you will, we're trying something different through these difficult times. I am asking for full consideration of fifteen thousand dollars. I consider them to be resource, and I also consider the fact that they're going through a hardship right now because of COVID and their loss of revenue. So with that said, Sharon?
Okay. Right now, I can tell you, and I've got the paperwork, you guys need a copy of this. We have forty-five unpaid memberships this year so far. I haven't gone whole hog after the businesses for their membership dues because it's hard on everyone right now, and I wanted to at least be as nice as I could. But we do have forty-five unpaid memberships. I did bring in seventeen new members, but we are down in memberships by, let's see, I've lost six thousand one hundred fifty dollars so far this year. And then on the lost revenue, in total of the Topamane Trade Show, the biggest yard sale, the annual dinner, which I was going to make money on, we lost thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars so far this year. Also, this affects the hours that I can work, so I'm trying to do more work on fewer hours. If I had more hours, I could do a heck of a lot more, going to see the businesses and trying to get new members at this time. But that's what I can do, and I do believe that if you check with the memberships that I have been serving, they do feel that they're being well-served. Everybody seems to be pleased with what the Chamber is doing right now and the collaborations between the Chamber and the town. So I'm hoping you do take this request into consideration and pass it, I really would appreciate it.
Any questions for Sharon? Is that the only item on this, in this department?
Yes.
Is it the only item? All right, then we're going to be looking for a motion to accept, Department 110. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to accept, Department 110? I do not. That one?
Well, I think there's going to be discussion.
At this point, nobody's asked to have to question or discuss, so I'm going to...
Well, I'll make the motion to accept that, yes.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
That's what you need for discussion?
That's what I need for discussion. Go ahead.
Um, I mean...
My note just seconded.
I just...
She seconded, my note seconded, yeah. Is that what you were looking for?
Well, I, I, I just, um... I was concerned about the five thousand. I'm, I, you know, I was kind of honestly just, like, I'm usually very vocal and I'm always first and I'm always the one that opens my big mouth, so I was trying to give someone else a chance. Well, okay, here we go. I, I, myself had some concerns about the five thousand, but in conversations and understanding where we are at as a community and what the need is to kind of try to move things forward here, I'm willing, if we're going to have this agreement and we're going to set parameters of what the expectations are, to accept the budget as it is. The one concern that was brought up, I forget, by one of these guys last night, was the work in the other communities. Because we're right now asking the taxpayer to pay an extra five thousand dollars to your budget when I believe Grandale only pays a hundred dollars and I don't know who else pays. In the very, I'm going to put you on the spot.
No, I get the...
In the very first budget meeting, you said you were helping Grandale with the grant. So I don't feel it's fair to give fifteen thousand dollars of taxpayer money to an organization that's working in another community, so could you address that?
Yes, the Board, because of my cut hours and everything, and because of the lack of funds coming from the Grandale area, have asked me not to work on grants for Grandale. And they, I have spoken to the people I was working with, and they are going through the town for that help, for the town of Grandale. I can tell you, in Frenchville, I get three members, in Grandale, I have four members, San Agatha, Sinclair, I have six members, and outside our service area, which are mostly media, larger companies, I have nine. And those larger companies, that's their office, like, you know, it's, so it's a hundred dollar membership. Those nine memberships outside are a hundred dollar memberships.
Are you, are you doing any other work for these communities? I mean, is there anything else that you're involved with?
No, right now, what I did is, when we started the beautification program and all of that, I reached out to the other municipalities and no one picked me up on it to work with me on that. So I don't know what that's all about, but they did not want to be involved in that. And then when we had the boost program, I was approached by some of my outside members saying, well, why isn't it, you know, for all the members? And I had to explain to them that this was Matalaska Town Funds, and that's how it had to be spent with the Matalaska-St. David businesses. So I did tell them to see their municipalities, and I'd be willing to work with their municipalities on a boost program or a similar program. And I guess nothing came out of that because I was not re-approached with that. So basically, what they get is the regular Chamber advertising I do, the Chamber outreach that I do, and basically, that's what the other businesses get. Like I said, there's thirteen, twenty-two businesses that are not in the Matalaska-St. David area.
Which is substantial.
So Gary, the new stuff that you want to try to work with the Chamber on is all going to be in Matalaska?
Yes, so our focus, obviously, our focus is the community, our community. I think that by default, us working and collaborating with them on initiatives here, they're going to be working with us, for us. And so that puts us in their office space, if you will, in their wheelhouse, and so I don't see, you know, the only benefit that I see that the other communities might realize from this is that, yes, it does make the Chamber more viable as an organization financially and having more hours, and yeah, you know, that's going to benefit the outside communities as well. But the work that we're doing here is for the town.
I don't have an issue with the others, by the way.
I believe too that as the other communities start to see just how hard the Chamber's working and how effective the Chamber will be, and I do believe that they are going to be very effective because they're going to have guidance. We have certain steps that we're going to be looking to take with the Chamber, and so I'm also in favor of increasing that expense of five thousand to the Chamber.
I mean, I could entertain the extra five thousand as long as, again, it follows that plan. And I'd like it to be documented because we're going to review this again next year. And I want to make sure that next year I'll be asking how effective was that extra five thousand dollars to next year? And try to see some documentation to prove that it was effective. The other concern I have is the forty-five unpaid memberships. I do understand that with COVID and everything going on, I just want to make sure that if we do give this extra money, it doesn't go towards these businesses who haven't paid.
No.
And that it goes towards the actual benefit of the town. And if one of these businesses needs help, you know, then we should make a plan for them to pay their bad dues before we, you know...
Right, no, I understand, and what I've done is, instead of sending out the billing in February, like I would normally do, I waited until July to send them out. And then I just sent another reminder billing. Then after that is going to be the notice that if they're not paid, I have to take them off. So they will not be served, because I've already carried some of them. Since I got to the Chamber, there were several members that hadn't paid, and I have been carrying them. So those will be taken off the list, and the ones that are paid will be the ones benefiting.
Anyone else?
Comments from the Finance Committee?
So I was in support of this originally. I'm still in support of the five thousand dollar increase based off the fact that it is a pilot program. Try to help generate some movement within that chamber. The concern is, I think it would have been better represented if we'd have had some material looked at and know exactly what that plan is. I mean, we're hearing the plan, and on the same token, we're hearing that, you know, there was a loss of funding because we didn't have the trade show and so on and so forth. So you were looking for some extra money, but yet at the same time, you need that extra money for a pilot program. So is the fund, it's really unclear if that funding is going to go directly towards this pilot type program or if it's going to help offset the loss of revenue from the COVID and everything that you have had. I think that's where some of that confusion comes in for the membership that we're sitting here. We don't have anything to go by. You know, what we're hearing is, I lost some revenue, I need a little bit more, and then I want to do a pilot program. And then I guess the other question that came to me today was, what other types of activities are you doing to help generate some more income? Are we looking at doing other things, or are we just going to wait for next year for another trade show? Or are we going to try to go outside that box? What does that look like? And we don't have that in front of us, so that's the hard part.
Okay, can I answer the questions one at a time? Okay, basically, I asked for the extra five thousand dollars in December of last year when I made the first proposal. This had nothing to do with lost revenue. This was to build up the Chamber again and to have a decent wage for me and decent working hours. Because the amount of money the Chamber had and could generate in revenue only paid for twenty hours a week. And I can't serve the membership really well on twenty hours a week. Whereas it needs a heck of a lot more hours to do what I need to. Right now, for extra funding, what I've looked at, well, we did start the flea market, we want to do that again this fall before the holidays. I started that very small, I did not charge a lot because I wanted to see if it was something that would really run here. But we are planning on doing one before the holidays, and right now, the only thing I'm waiting on is to see if Caribou is going to be doing theirs or not. If Caribou does theirs, it'd be the same week that I'm looking at, so I need to either find a different date or do something that doesn't conflict. Other than that, I'm looking at using advertising on our website and Facebook page to see if I can generate some revenue in that fashion. So there are different things that I'm looking at. You know, and some of them are in the planning stages, I'd rather not speak to it right now. But there are other things that I'm looking at to generate revenue. Does that answer all your questions? I'm not sure if it answered anything you're asking.
Go ahead, Dan.
In our initial discussions at the budget meeting, I had, I had serious reservations, but I will support the five thousand dollars for the simple reason that you do have a pilot project intact. But two months from now, we will be working on next year's budget. And at that point, I will not support rubber stamping the same amounts for next year's budget until we have concrete numbers to look at for the next year.
Well, I don't think any budget should be rubber stamped anyway. And I do, when I ask for the budget figure for review, I do give you supporting documents.
Thank you.
So, you know, that's just a given. I would never just say, well, hey, you gave me fifteen thousand last year, give me fifteen thousand this year, it doesn't work that way. So I do know that I have to prove the value of the money you're putting into the program.
We're good? Yep.
Last night at the budget meeting, I was one of those that didn't support the fifteen thousand dollars. My reasoning was that some of these programs in the past, I myself thought they weren't successful. And I was worried about that, but you're changing my mind.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
I think, I think it's important to note too that, so what really changed in my mind the most is that if we don't support them through one more year, chances are they're going to end up closing. And then where are we at? So I feel like through COVID, had they not lost the trade show and all that, to be honest, I would have said no. But then I don't want to see you shut down, so let's keep it open another year, let's see if we can all help to make it successful and do something in town. And then, you know, like Dan said, well, we have another budget coming soon, so we'll just have to see if this, if there's a change.
And the reason I didn't support the full, the full five thousand is because this is like multiple communities are involved in this chamber, but Matalaska's the only one footing the bill, which I don't think is right. If, if we're going to support other communities, they should be supporting some of that five thousand.
Well, I can tell you that I did ask them all for an increase, but you can't jump from one hundred dollars to... but you can't jump from one hundred dollars to a thousand.
No, I understand that. But the taxpayers, I don't believe, would like to pay for other communities to participate in our program, and they're not paying. That's why I kind of didn't want to add.
Because right now, the majority of my membership is Madoaska-St. David. So I'm serving them all.
Great, but nothing is saying that you're not going to serve Senegal, Grand Isle, wherever the other communities are.
Right.
Exactly, my point.
But like I said, I have so few members in the other communities that it is...
Right. No, I understand your point, I see your point. I see your point.
Because I have been trying to work with the other communities to see that, you know, things are equitable, you know, footing.
I'm sure you have.
And I reached out to Dan Buhr because they lost their Chamber of Commerce. So I am trying to get them into the fold also.
But while you're doing that, it's costing us the taxpayer money.
I understand what you're saying.
I would, if I could, one advice comment. I think one thing that we need to be mindful of is that through our efforts, collaboration, if we're able to draw people from those communities to come spend some dollars here, then that speaks volumes. And so, you know, yes, we might not be able to get, you know, we might feel like we're not getting a fair shake on membership from the other municipalities. But at the same time, we're going to be driving these dollars into our communities, so.
Yeah, I wish I thought that.
Yep, so we have a motion, we have a second, so we're ready for a vote. All in favor, opposed? This goes to the Finance Committee for your vote.
I would need to take a motion on either recommend or not recommend Budget 720.
Motion to recommend.
I have a motion to recommend. Second.
I'll second, Chris.
All those in favor? All opposed?
So we're all set?
Gary, so the motion carries?
The motion carries.
Yep.
Your next item that you wanted us to cover was social services, was that it?
Yes, please.
And that's what, seven twenty?
Yep.
So what do we need to discuss here?
I think that the Finance Committee had some discussion on the Historical Society requests. And I think that we, I don't think that we were, we had, you know, at our last meeting, we had considered that we can have a whole lot of discussion on the requests. And so I think that we're going to have further discussion. We wanted to make sure Fran was here to represent and ask, answer any other questions that you may have. So with that said, Fran, can you go first?
The only recommendation that the Finance Committee had on Monday with Department 712 was to accept it as presented, except for the Long Lake Water Quality Association. There was no recommendation to do anything different with the Historical Society.
There was no?
No, it was only Long Lake Water Quality Association, I believe, recommended to zero that out.
That's right, not fund it all.
That was the only change we had on that one.
And again, the reason I believe we're not funding is because we're the only community paying for the testing, and no other community's participating. Again, Madoaska has picked up the whole vote, which is not fair.
Well, if there are no other questions, then I entertain a motion to accept.
So...
To accept your choice? Oh, I'm sorry, wait.
So if you would, I think that what I would like to see if possible here is that if you're going to change a number somewheres, that you make a motion on that.
I'm sorry, okay.
And then once that's done, then we can just approve the budget as a whole, if you will.
What was that figure that they were looking for, two thousand?
I would make a motion that we eliminate the two thousand dollars for the Long Lake Water Quality Association from Department 720.
I'll second that. Any questions? And I'm looking for a hand, whether we accept it.
Accept.
Or not. All in favor, Finance Committee? Yep, well, it goes to the Finance Committee at this point.
I would need a motion either to, I want to, I guess we'll do it the same way for the Social Service Department, Department 720, to fund it as presented minus two thousand dollars for Long Lake Water Quality.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Fran, you're all set?
Yeah, we still need to vote, that's the, as a whole.
See, my big mouth helps sometimes, Fran. I said my big mouth helps sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes.
All right, so we can start from the beginning now.
So this vote was to accept this budget as is, but there's no more voting on this particular department?
No, no. The motion that was made was to adjust the two thousand, but there was no motion to accept the entire Social Service budget.
All right, so then...
So then we need a motion?
My motion was to accept 712. Sorry, if I didn't make that clear.
It's hard to hear, you can hear.
Did you guys have other discussion with that then?
Nope.
No problem.
And somebody whispered in my ear that, well, I'm not speaking loud enough, so if we can talk a little louder, that would help the camera. Anybody else?
All right, then we're going to go back to the top of the list, which would be the Governing Body, Department 100. Have a motion to accept the budget?
I make a motion to accept the budget as is.
No, second.
Second. Any questions? If we have no questions, then I need to show hands, all in favor, opposed? To the Finance Committee?
I would need a motion to accept the Governing Body's Department 100. A motion.
Second, Chris.
All those in favor?
So Governing Body, Department 100, approved. Town Administration, Department 110. Do I have a motion to accept the budget?
I would make a motion to accept Department 110.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If no discussion, I'd like to have a show of hands on approval. This approved, all in favor, Finance Committee?
Need a motion to accept Department 110. As a vote.
I would make a motion, yeah. When, before we do that, Chris, we have a recommendation. Doesn't involve this year's budget, but as a whole, we favor that this line item over all the departments is quite expensive. And we're asking that if other options, can we look at for next year or whatever?
This was not the department that...
I think that's the other one.
Oh, it's the other?
Yeah, no, it's the next.
Okay.
This one had a sixty-five thousand dollar cut, and you're talking about, I don't know what number that is, but you're talking about Department 200. Just what you guys had.
Yeah, I don't know, second.
Okay.
Yeah. Are you okay with that?
All in motion.
Second. All those in favor, we've got a motion to approve Department 110. Opposed, Gary?
Okay, so Department 110 is approved as is. Department 120, General Assistance.
There was discussion at the Finance Committee meeting to reduce this divided by ten percent.
Is what they, right, that's what you have?
Yes. But after some explanation that with the COVID and unemployment, that demand, you'd be hired, we decided to leave it at this.
No, Chris, you have your...
I have the notice to Department 120, it was a recommendation to cut by ten percent.
Yeah.
I believe it was out of the GA Services part of that budget.
Do you remember it was two to two?
Okay, yes.
And I said, because I vote here, I was going to not vote and leave you guys because I wanted you to do your own thing. And I said, if somebody wanted something discussed by the board, then I would vote with that side so that it would come here, so at least it would be a discussion. And that was one of them.
Are you good with that?
So what was your concern, Christian?
I think it was...
I would just remind everybody that we are mandated by the state under the General Assistance Ordinance to fund General Assistance. There's nothing that says what funding level needs to be. But if we run out of money in the GA budget, we have to continue to pay GA. We can't stay, well, you know, put down, we're not going to let this prove. We're going to have to continue to fund that in the red if we're not adequately funded. So my biggest concern, while I would explain that, over the years, we've worked in making sure that GA is administered to qualified people. And the numbers show that we've been going down. But this year is a bit of a concern with what's going on with COVID and unemployment. And then people, you know, potentially losing their benefits here winter, that resources will probably be, if all of them, resources available, you know, will be AICAP or YEEP and all those things, are going to probably be strained this winter. And yes, we are the last, we are supposed to be the last place for help. You know, we always try to steer people to resources that are out there, that are available. And then we are the last stop. And so we can't refuse, once we get to that point, you know, that's how it works. So, you know, I would recommend that we can flat fund based on what's going on in the economy right now. This is my point.
I think the reason that we didn't ask for ten percent is because last year's budget was fourteen thousand. And then the proposed budget is twenty-three thousand. I believe that's why, one of the reasons we decided to cut it ten percent, because last year they only used fourteen thousand.
Well, I make a motion to accept Department 120, General Assistance as is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed?
I will say, one more comment to that is...
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, one more comment I want to add. And although I want any data to support that, but I think that the big unemployment bump this winter after COVID hit kept people out of our GA office. So if not for that, I feel like the problem would have seen that number increase this winter. At the end of the year, it would have been a lot higher than this.
So this is like you cast. Moving on to...
I was going to do the Finance.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course. Chris?
I need a motion to your approval, to Department 120. Motion to approve as is. I need a second. All in favor? Opposed?
So again...
That's the one that, that's the proposed budget, with no tax.
Right, right, exactly. Flat funding. So Department 120 passed. On to Municipal Buildings, Department 130. Do I have a motion to accept? Department 130. Yep, so move, do I have a second? Second by Manoa. Any questions? Nobody has any questions? All right, and all in favor of accepting the budget for the Municipal Building? Your hands, opposed? Who should care? On to the Finance.
I need a motion to recommend Department 130 as proposed.
I'll be, Chris.
Second by Ken. All in favor? Opposed, Gary?
All right, Department 135, Safety Complex.
I'll make a motion to accept Department 135 as presented.
Second. Any questions? If we have no questions, all in favor? Opposed? Chris with the Finance?
Need a motion to recommend Department 135 as proposed.
I make a motion.
I'll second, Chris. All those in favor? Opposed, Gary?
Moving on to Department 140, Elections. Do you have a motion to accept?
Can I, I just make a little comment on this one. Just so you guys know, there was a bit of discussion about this department. I know that, you know, people watching this for the first time might feel like this is all flying by really fast. There's departments in here that have cut sixty thousand dollars. There's people, there's departments like from full-timers to part-timers to different areas. This one has gone up quite a bit, and the discussion was had whether we should cut it or not. I'm just making a point that if anyone does see the number, you know, it's up four thousand dollars. But basically, that's because we didn't have town meeting in the last budget. So in this year's fiscal year, or the last fiscal year, so this year's fiscal year, we have to have two of them, basically. Because we're doing this one, and so that's why if anyone sees this and wonders why we're approving this Elections Department budget going up so much, it's because now we're having two.
And we're having presidential elections as well this year.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to share that because that number was a, you know, we've really picked at these numbers a lot, and we can't bring this one down.
So I make a motion to accept the Elections budget, Department 140 as is.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Finance Committee?
Need a motion to recommend Electoral Department 140.
I'll move to recommend Department 140 as is.
Second by Ken. Any instructions? All those in favor? Opposed, Gary?
The committee's acceptable.
This is your department that you wanted to discuss with us?
So, this is Department 200, Community Development Codes and Assessings. Do I have a motion to accept the budget as is?
There were some recommendations from the Finance Committee on this one. The Finance Committee recommended that the Board of Selectmen evaluate the department, the possibility of providing good jobs at one.
I don't know that we had a second to the motion before we started discussion, but we have a second? You made the motion, right?
No.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, do you have anything further to...
No, I was just pointing out what the Finance Committee was...
Yep.
So on this particular budget item, there was some discussion. Although we, I believe we agreed on the current proposed budget, I believe we were asking the Board to consider looking at reviewing code assessing the Community Development Officer, combine some positions or some tasks, see if there's any feasibility of reducing the cost. We knew that that wasn't going to be able to happen on this budget cycle. We're asking for that to be looked at for the next year's cycle.
And that's between code assessing and assessing, code enforcement and assessing?
Correct.
Okay.
I personally am in full support of looking into that for cost reduction, code enforcement as much as community development. I believe it's an opportune time to possibly combine jobs, and I'm not talking about doubling the workload, but I believe we can disperse a workload and make it a feasible proposition for the town and a tax saving.
Anybody else? All in favor of Department two hundred? Opposed? Kerry, Carrie, Chris?
Need a motion to recommend development code assessing Department two hundred. Second?
I'll second it. With the recommendations.
I need a review of the number of budgets. All in favor? I approve that.
Department three hundred? Ambulance service?
I make a motion to accept the ambulance department budget as is.
Second? Second by Lori. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? I do it accepted. Chris?
Need a motion to recommend Department three hundred. Second by Ken. Second, all in favor?
Police department? Three ten. Motion? Second by you? So moved.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? No further discussion? And with a show of hands, both approve, disapprove, in favor, Chris?
Motion to recommend police department Department three seven.
I made a motion to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Moving on to the fire department. Department three twenty. Motion to approve. Need a motion? Manoa, second. Any questions?
Yep.
Yep.
Was there a mention of taking money out of some other account to help with the repair of the truck that, that pump? Is that in, in this final figure?
That's, that's gonna be in a different.
Okay, thank you, good.
Any other, any other questions?
Is the board selectmen looking at trying to put some sort of count back into the fire department for capital projects? So they're not in the same situation year after year.
Carrie?
Basically what I'm telling you, the fire department is significantly underfunded. If we don't do something about it now, we're gonna have a fire service within our cap, that's what I'm trying to get across.
So to recap, we'll talk about the fire department budget, I'll jump into the capital, because we had a wider discussion on fire department within the capital with the budget. But in essence, there's gonna be some recommendations regarding equipment, funding of equipment once we look at the capital.
Any other discussions? All in favor? Opposed?
I abstain, because I'm part of the fire department, I abstain.
Okay.
Need a motion to recommend fire department budget three twenty. Second by Ken. All in favor? Carried.
Moving on to Department three twenty-five, DMA. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept as recommended, Department three twenty-five.
Any questions? No questions, we have a vote to approve. Disapproved. Carrie? Chris?
Motion to recommend DMA Department three twenty-five.
Second by Ken.
Robert, all in favor? Carried.
Good. Moving on to Department four hundred, library. Motion to accept.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept as is with the recommendation of removing ten thousand dollars from the bottom line of the library.
Minus ten. So that makes it like one.
There was a, just, there was a recommendation from the finance committee to cut ten percent, which is eleven thousand, what, what is that, eleven? Two eighty-seven?
I'm okay with the.
With, with ten, with a straight figure?
Before you get too far along, I'm not sure what the right time is here, but there are people here.
Yep.
Who speak about the library.
Yes.
So I think, you know.
And it's not that discussion.
I think, you know, we deserve to hear, they deserve our attention before you guys vote.
Yep, so, so are we, I don't remember here, but did we have the motion? You had, we had the motion, did we have a second? Was there a second on the, there was a second? All right, so now we're open for, for discussion?
Yes, but you have to explain my reasoning for this. I definitely think the town benefits quite a bit from the library. I mean, no means am I trying to underfund them, so they can't perform what they can. Lori did some examination of some other departments as well as my, no, sorry, Manoa did. And we are almost double at some of the other communities for our funding for the library. I do believe there's a few line items that I have some issues with as far as, I hate to call it double dipping, but getting paid for spring cleaning, mowing lawns, cleaning snow off of driveways. I believe those line items should be removed and should be included in the salaries and wages of the person in charge. So if you remove those items and break it down to the ten thousand, I think that would be more acceptable. I do plan also on next year, I'd like to review this budget a little more in depth, to hopefully, you know, identify what each line item is for.
I'm gonna stick my nose in there, Ken, did you wanna come sit here?
Under this.
Well, because, all right, because usually the department head comes to sit with us and we talk it out.
Really, Ken, if you could?
Okay.
You need to be included in the conversation.
Any other discussion?
Well, I have just something. I contacted the town of Fort Kent. Their appropriation is thirty-six thousand six hundred. They are, they're like us, they have a library of board trustees, and they're nonprofit organization, and the town funds the salaries, the FICA, the Medicare, water bills, and insurance. Their, their board of the trustees covers their electricity, the heating expenses, supplies, and minor renovations. And I guess once a year, they go friends of the library to have ways of raising funds to help offset the expenses.
Do you know what their total expenses, or is it just?
That's all they give them.
That's all they give them.
Thirty-six thousand five hundred. The rest is raised by their board of trustees in Fort Kent.
So for reference, our library budget is a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Right.
Anybody else on the board? Go ahead, Dan.
For future, future reference, if you will, before we look into budgeting the library, I personally would like clarification on ownership of the building itself, to find out for sure and for certain if, or if we do not own that building. And if we do not own that building, we'll have to cross that bridge for funding for, for the future.
I do see here that, you know, things have been kind of bottled in together here with library operators. We just have one figure, but we don't have any idea what that.
That's right here.
Oh, in the big.
Right, yeah, that's second page.
Yep, I got it, I'm sorry, I did look at that too, I did see that, I just forgot about it. Ken, did you have anything to add?
The library is owned by the Library Corporation. It's always been like that.
If you could be able to speak a little bit louder, if you have a hard time making sound, like you're trying to sing. And the library is important to me, so I really wanna know what's going on. And I don't think I'm the only one here.
The library building is owned by the Library Corporation. The Library Corporation, when they formed the library back in nineteen forty or something, they bought the building, and then in nineteen ninety-three, they expanded it through, through a giant grant that they got. Whether or not the town owns the building, I don't know. You're still gonna have costs, you know, even if the town owns the building or doesn't own the building.
Ken, I can answer that question for you. You answered that also. The library is owned by the corporation. Upon its demise, it goes to the town of Madawaska. That's in the bylaws.
Yep.
That's a topic that was discussed with the resource committee just a few years ago, well, five or six now. And since I was chairman of that, a lot of things came up in our discussion. Not only library, but town office, the municipal building with the police department, we discussed a whole lot of things. And it would take all evening to do that, so I'm gonna cut it short to just library. At the time that we discussed this business of library, we also discussed the problems of people using the library. And just like the town office, considered moving the town office here and closing that building completely, either selling it or demolishing it, but to move that over here as well. At that time, we were discussing everything with wide open. The problem with the library moving here was that there are some people that are in town that are sex offenders, and they cannot be near where students are, and they would not have access. It's the same issue for the town office, when we talked about moving the town office over here. The town office would probably have been downstairs where the gym, the gym is, is what we had talked about, and also other uses. So my advice to you as selectmen and finance committee is that you resurrect a group of people to discuss all these possibilities. We even discussed about moving the town office to the police department and moving the police department. And we talked about the handicap problem of doing that. So a lot of those ideas were floating around, but it was just our group, seven people. And we got some information from other people. So as far as the library is concerned, I'd have a real concern about moving it up here for that reason. We were looking at anywhere to save some money as you are. So as far as library, I'd leave it alone for now, I think it's premature. I don't know what's gonna happen with this business of site selection and this school over there. If that falters, things change. A whole lot of things change. When we made a study, it was three years, five years, ten years. We talked about the mill, whether it's closing, and we got some information about that. We talked about the business of possibly merging the schools, so that you had one location. So all of these things have been talked about, but it was in general, but specific in some areas, and we had discussion amongst ourselves, agreement and disagreement. So on the library, I'd leave it alone till we know where we're going with the rest of the programs internal. Town office, if this place over here is not used by education, there are a lot of things that you can do. Recreation of this building, the town office is a vault in there, this place could become the library, yeah. I don't know how much money we'd save by doing that, but, so my advice to you is that if you're thinking, think long term, and have that ongoing, and not just at a meeting like this, where you're nickel and dime in some, some areas. That's all I can advise you with, if you want more information, I'd be glad to meet with you and give you some history in terms of what we had done.
Duly, duly noted. Yep.
So, we had breakfast, I respect those comments, because, you know, we did talk about resurrecting that committee, but I, I, I realize that.
Excuse, excuse me, I am really deaf, so I never heard any of your discussion till I heard the word library.
Okay, I'll, I'll face it. I, I realize that one person did make it very clear they wanted to close the library, but, and I, I don't even know how that went wildfire, and, and that was a misconception, that was misinformation that was put out on Facebook today, that said that this board was looking to close the library. In all of our discussions, that was not discussed. We have departments that have cut sixty thousand dollars, the police department cut to a part-time position, the public works cut a part-time position. This is one of the departments that didn't come to us with any type of cut. So we started doing our homework, because there are people, unlike you, who are very upset about how much we're funding the library, and said, look at the other communities, look at the other communities, this is what they fund, this is what they fund. How is it fair, you know, you're cutting public works like crazy, and the roads are horrible, but we're funding this? So we just started to do the homework. And we asked if other departments can cut ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty, sixty, can they cut their operation a little bit? Now Jason made some suggestions where to cut. Others of us said, well, you know, they're open forty-nine hours, can they survive on forty-four, forty even? And, and that's all we're asking, we're asking for every single department to try to give us some cuts. I know, Ken, you explained to us, I think the last time that you're paid librarian, but you also get paid extra to do the snow blowing and the shoveling and the things like that, your aides work twenty-seven hours a week. We're just asking, you know, as a salaried employee, is, is there more you can do? Can we even just close one day a week? I, I don't know what it's gonna be. But there's nobody here on this side who ever said, shut this library. Danny is, is a little boisterous sometimes and says how he feels, but it's the last thing he would do is to come here tonight and say, no funding. We, we would have those discussions, and we would speak together, and, you know, really try to understand the whole communities before we would ever think to make a decision like that.
I didn't know this meeting, I haven't kept up with it.
That's all, that's all I wanted to share, because I know a lot of people who are here because they thought we were closing it, and, you know.
That's not, that's not, that's not the intent. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm gonna take this off, so my voice can be heard real clear, okay? I want people to understand the situation that we're sitting in today, and what led us to the discussions that we had around this library. And it's actually upsetting to me, really unfortunate, that the community can only come together when strifle hits them right in the face. I don't know if anybody in this room, other than those that have been involved in this budget process and has been open to the public, is aware of what the real big picture is. We have a fire department that has a truck that is reaching its last leg. We have a grader that cleans our streets that's on its last leg. We have a fire suppression system at the multipurpose building that's on its last leg. We have a grade school, an elementary school that's a fallout or response shelter in event of emergency that this community relies upon to go there in the event that we need it. All these departments are running off bare bones. This committee is volunteer. Okay, we sat together, and we looked at, we put our heads together, and we tried to come up with some ways that we can save money. We're talking about essential services. We have an opportunity to have a fire in any given place in this town, whether it's a nursing home, whether it's the elementary school, whether it's your house, your grandmother's house, your brother, your daughter, your mother, it doesn't matter. We don't have the ability to do what we need to do as a community to fight those. So the decision comes upon a group of volunteers who sit down flabbergasted and try to find a way that we can save money. So we have places that we could look at where we can, where we can save. Now, do you want your house to catch on fire and not have a fire truck able to respond and lose a family member? Do you want your school to catch on fire and not have somebody to respond? During the major winter blizzards and other things, do you want your roads repaired and fixed so you can go to work and enjoy the things that you do every day? Or would you like to go to the library and read a book? Those are decisions that we face with, okay? Nobody here says that the library's not worth it. Nobody here feels that the library needs to be closed tomorrow. But those are all options that are on the table. We are here to figure out how to get us out of a hole that we are in, okay? Everybody on this committee, on this finance committee supports a library. But we have to look at all options, that's all it is, it's an option. Our recommendation was to trim ten percent this year and look at the numbers for next year. Let's look at it, let's get better at it. Let's look at it, let's get better at it. The fact of the matter is, we don't have a lot of information. If you look at the expenses shown, we pay for parking lot fees, we're paying for general repair and maintenance on the building, we're paying building and casualty insurance on a building that we're not even sure we even own. So you have to take that into consideration when you understand where we're coming from. We weren't out to attack the library. I surely wasn't looking for any kind of Facebook posts to go viral, and bastardize the people that are sitting here trying to figure out how to get out of this mess. We're trying to do a job, okay? We need to stop acting like the way we're acting everywhere and start coming together as community, put our heads together and stop being part of the problem. Be part of the resolution. If you have ideas how to save this budget and fix it the way it is without making those cuts, by all means, put your name on the ballot, go to the town meeting, voice your opinion. But don't come here and criticize the people that are trying to do it from a legitimate standpoint. Please, take the time to go to those meetings, come and understand the whole picture. Come and understand the whole picture. But do not criticize the people that are voluntary to sit here to do that.
Go ahead, Yezel.
That's why we're here, to understand.
These, these meetings have been going on since January, okay? So we are here to finalize a budget. We've recommended a ten percent reduction. A ten percent reduction in that budget is minimal compared to some of the sacrifices that are gonna be happening. You're gonna hear, you hang around and hear the rest of that, and hear what the ambulance that plucks about to face and other things. Okay, this isn't all just one picture, we're not out to attack the library, people. Nobody wants that. We're faced with tough decisions, okay? We're trying to get through it.
Yezel, go ahead, Yezel.
I'm not here to criticize, and I thank the finance committee because you also work with the school. I thank the board, I know that it's hard to work, I know it's not easy. I thank you for explaining that it's not, you're not here to close the library, and that's great. I'm just here to say that as a former board member on the library for over twenty years, I just want to give you a little bit more information as you move forward. Maybe not now, but when you're investigating it next year, like Jason just recommended, this budget is always, always on a tight wire. That's the term I think that Don Chass used to use. You're running a building, you're running a salary, you're running a couple of part-time aides, all at about a hundred and ten thousand. And that's been going on for years. I remember when things were cut back then, it was very, it was always very tight. Concerning the snow removal and the lawn care, that was a budget cut previously to prevent having to contract out. So the board, a long time ago, board, Roger was on there, other people, that was done to save some funds. So, I mean, I'm just trying to give you a little bit more history. This budget, ten percent does affect it, ten percent of a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and fourteen thousand?
Hundred and twelve or twelve.
Hundred and twelve is a lot for a small budget. I'm just trying to tell you that it's, take a look at it historically, it's been on a tight wire for a long time. The board runs it really tight. Thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Yezel.
There are no comments that I made a while ago were felt. This finance committee runs under the bylaws and the, the, the whole finance committee thing, that was written by me. And it was approved by the taxpayers. And I think they're doing a great job simply because they're approaching it and they're making the attempt. So there was no intent of putting anybody down. The only thing I was trying to put across to you is that get some input, there's some people that have information that would be valuable to you and would help you. It's tough when you go ten percent across and you don't take it into account for one reason or other. You know, if you take at the federal level, one of those big bombers will pay for a whole lot of smart programs. And I, I don't want, you don't wanna get me started talking because I'll go forever.
We know.
Okay? So, uh, finance committee members, I appreciate your help because not many people step forward. And you pointed that out a while ago, and I appreciate your help and this committee because you're taking it seriously. And I know that that board is same way. Anybody that serves any public office, especially the ones that are not getting paid, and I know that feeling, I've done that many years, should be complimented, should be thanked. We cannot all agree. We can compromise, and our group of seven do not always agree. If you recall, ours made, one selectman, one school board member, one past individual that served on the selectment and resource, and so on and so forth. So, all I can say is keep up the good work, but it's not gonna be an easy one. And it would've been a tougher one if that mill went are closed.
Yep, go ahead, Yezel.
All I'd like to say is whoever started the rumor that they were gonna close the library, ching on them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yep, Roger.
I was posted this morning. I posted with what I thought was correct. I went back later and said, I realized they're doing a ten percent cut, it went out of my control. I was basing it off of comments I heard the finance committee say during their last meeting, your true, what you would share and your opinions. I didn't see the end where it was down to a ten percent, so I admit I was, I'd fault there. I do believe that there was some harsh things said against our library. And I feel that as a teacher, I needed to advocate that books are important, the community does value the library, and that is what I was trying to get the finance committee to realize, was that the library does have value in Madawaska. It serves the whole town. And I'm sorry if that out of control, that was not my intention.
Thank you. But I ask everybody to realize that when you do go on Facebook, Facebook is Facebook. I've had to tell Lori that when she goes on Facebook, just liken it to going to the circus. And if you happen to see me there, might just be another clown in the circus. Facebook is Facebook, so don't take that as gospel. This is where the decisions are made, these are where the facts are invited, and this is where the decisions are made. But pertaining to the library for the future, I believe that the town of Madawaska owns enough real estate that, we're not talking about doing away with the library, we're just trying to think of how to do this where it would cost the taxpayers a lot less money and have the exact same service. That's all it is.
Before I, I entertain any, any more comments, you know, let's try to remember that, that we have about two minutes for each one of you, so with that, Roger, go ahead.
I'm also a previous board member from the library camp. I have strongly agree with Esther and with Gigi, Giel, okay? Ken, he devotes his time there as a director of the library, not a hundred percent, but a hundred and ten plus. And if there's anybody who tries to control the budget, okay, it's Ken. He's very, very disciplined about where he puts his money and all that. And if you look at the history, like Gigi said, okay, of our sins, Ken, how, how many years have you been there, Ken?
Fifty.
If you look at the history, you'll find out that that budget did not increase that much, because he's holding a tight rope on that. And probably you want to reconsider what you're trying to do, and probably, if it's something you want to project, to really look in depth, not only as committees, which are doing very well, I'm sure, but probably making something with the public at large. That's my consideration, is to reconsider, we could think about to maintain, maintaining it what it is.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Teresa Mador, I'm a teacher at Madawaska High School, and I'd like to speak up in support of the public library. I think Ken does a lot, to promote literacy, from the young to the old. You can have internet access there, there's computers there, plethora of different magazines, newspapers. So I reminded of the saying that a democracy depends on an educated and well-informed populace. And to that end, the library is an important service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we have...
So you have, you have a video there.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Bethany, and I understand what Chris is saying about, you know, essential services and fire department and police station, but I think the fact that so many people turned up today, that the library is essential for us, in a, in a different kind of way. But a lot of people relying on that place for, for help, a place to escape, and I just like to express that.
Okay, yes?
I own the library, every two weeks, we got four or five books, my husband and I give donation to the library twice a year. So when I heard this rumor going around, I thought it was my cause for which. But, and we're talking about putting the library here in the school, and we have the same books that came orders from us, that the new mobiles are out there on the market. That's what I'm talking about. So move this year, I want to get the same service I was, I was getting at the library now.
Well, at this point, I mean, the discussion really is not to close the library. Yep.
I saw my half a few years ago. A real estate came in and he said, "Our people are looking for a school in the town and public library."
Anybody else? Brad?
I just want to say that a few years back, there was a similar discussion, and so I was, wanted to find out for myself, I went and sat in the parking lot or in the library at different times of the day to see how it was being used. So my comment is more how it's being used. It blew my mind. It from the morning, there was a clientele, a certain clientele in the morning, noon time even, there were certain people going in. After school, it was like an influx of young kids wanting to use the computers. And in the evening, it was a lot of families.
Can, can we say that that was within the last, what, four or five years, or that you actually sat and observed?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Got one quick thing. So my goal here was never to shut down the library. I know the finance committee talked about ten percent, I went a little lower than that ten thousand. And my aim is because I've asked the police department, I've asked the fire department, I've asked the rec department, I've asked every department to reduce their budgets, and a lot of them have. So I'm not trying to pick on the library, I'm not trying to pick on certain services. When I came on the board, my goal was to help the town reduce taxes, and that's what I'm doing across the entire budget. I'm not just focusing on the library. The reason I brought it up today is just because that's one of the items that we haven't discussed a drop yet, we haven't asked yet to reduce our budget. So we did do a lot of research, we didn't do enough to decide, are we gonna move the library, are we gonna change this, change that? The only research we did is this year during this budget, can we possibly ask them to do a ten thousand dollar reduction, so.
So you've never asked, you've never asked Ken to find a way to decrease his budget? Is that what I just heard you say?
Correct. And it's the same thing with the police department, fire department. I, you know, I didn't sit down with Jim and say, "Hey, what are the things you can reduce?" We've only asked, "Hey, can you reduce your budget?" Same thing with the fire and police chief and so on and so forth, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to echo what everyone says tonight. And I would like to reflect on what you said, Chris. I do appreciate that in fact, the need of the health department or the safety department, we really appreciate the effort that they do, and without them, we really wouldn't want, we would not function in this community. And we appreciate all of you sitting here, trying to figure out how to support the community as well. But at the other hand, I would like to echo the effort of the, and the responsibility that we need to know towards the library and how important it is. If it was not that important, he won't see this many people here tonight. And that's really a very point that you can look at, because we put the trust in you when you figure out all these things, but here we're not pointing a finger, we have to stand with you, and stand together. You're heard. When, when all, everything is broadcast, we try to follow it. We might not be able here to be with you in a meeting, but we follow what's going on. And we appreciate every minute, every second you do. As a person who moved to the Madawaska and I became a citizen of the United States, I appreciate Madawaska, how you supported me and how I am being involved and being a part of the community that I feel is mine and my home. So with that, I'm gonna say, please, I'm heard that you wanna, you know, you wanna decrease the hours of the, of the library. I don't agree with that completely, because even the hours are already short enough. And I know some few people, they don't even have transportation, they walk mile, two miles, three miles to get to the library, and that happened within mental stage, mental health. And we know that September is actually a month of suicide awareness. If we take that away, we're bringing some issues to our community. So please that, put that in mind. I appreciate the police department, they're really continuing to save our safety. I appreciate the ambulance that really have supported them and my family so many times. I appreciate you, all of you, but please, put that in your ears and let it rain. We need that library and we need school, because we need our future, we need our kids to learn and to be educated, and thank you.
Can I just make one more?
Go ahead, Ken.
I want to go back to the Fort Kent thing. I think Fort Kent has always underfunded their, their public library because they have the university library there, and a lot of people think it was bad. So I, if, if you look at the numbers, our numbers are double Fort Kent's usage numbers.
I tried to join and never got a response.
Yes.
You're saying that your numbers, the, the folks that come visit?
Yes.
Your numbers are twice as much as the Fort Kent library?
In our circulation.
Right. Okay. Anybody else?
Got a question.
Yep.
The company that owns the library, do they help fund anything? I mean, is it, is it nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit.
Nonprofit, right.
So the discussion at this point is...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Although we do fundraise, like, like, every, every week we have a book sale.
But the company that owns the libraries...
It's a nonprofit corporation.
Don't give you any funds.
I mean, it can, it doesn't, the only funds it can raise is through the fund.
Other than what the towns?
The towns, right.
Are there fundraisers done?
I'm sorry?
Is there fundraising?
Oh, yes. They have a book sale every week, but you know, the amount that comes in is, is, would be two percent of the entire budget. And donations are minimal. We do have, there's a guy on...
Another, and other type of income, while we, when I was there, case that Ken is working on digitalizing all the St. John Valley time circulation. And that's a lot of work. But once this is all finished and people can get that online, then I was telling him, well, maybe we, when that thing is completed and people come online to get their sources on the St. John Valley time, is there a way where they can pay a fee to go through that database? I don't know.
No, it's, it's, it's probably not going to go online because it's way too huge and the copyright is owned by the St. John Valley time, so we couldn't charge it.
Kind of figured.
Ten seconds?
Yep. I like that.
When you remove it, make up, when you review it next year going forward, please make sure that Ken gives you, he may not give you unless you ask, the statistics that he's got, and how much use your occasional archives there are being used by people coming into this community who ask, "I want to retrace my roots." Please ask him about that when you get to that study.
Well, the goal of the review is to sit down with the library committee, and it's not to say reduce more, it's just get a better understanding of what the library does, and, and get an understanding of the funding.
Thank you.
Once again, let me reiterate that this is not a witch hunt, this is not a venture to close the library. This is just a venture to provide the taxpayers with the exact same service at a much reduced cost, which I think is very possible.
All right, so are we ready to, so the, the, the discussion right now with the library is to reduce their budget by ten thousand dollars. This would bring their budget down to a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and seven. We have a motion to accept that budget.
The motion was made to do that.
It was made already?
Yeah, I made the motion.
No, it was made to...
Mr. Chair?
It was a discussion, not that we're accepting this ten thousand dollar reduction.
No, that's what, I made the motion to accept this with the ten thousand dollar reduction.
Sorry, then I forgot.
Second, so now we can vote.
Mine all seconded, but Gary has...
You know, this discussion went on so long that I, I forgot that that motion had been made.
I just want to make sure that procedurally, we can go through this pretty quickly and then forget our steps, but I, there, there has been a request to reconsider. And so I just want to make sure that you understand as you work through your motions, if there is going to be reconsideration of, of that motion, that you make, you make it so.
So that has to become in, in the form of a vote?
Well, there's already been a motion in the second.
Yeah, we need to approve.
And so either, either.
Either, either we accept it or, or we, or we don't. Right?
Correct.
Is that, is that the proper procedure?
Yes.
Well, what, what happened, Doug, okay, is that before you had your discussions, you, you were making recommendations. And recommendations should be done after the discussion. So you get a better understanding, you live there.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor, so we'll take care of the motion.
Yep, so the motion on the floor is to accept the amount of 102,807. Do I have, do I have a show of hands to approve?
I know, I know, I already seconded.
No, I'm asking for the vote now. Okay. So I'm looking for a vote to accept that amount of 102,807. Do I have a show of hands to accept that amount? Two opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
So I have to carry, so, so at this point, I would, I would vote to approve that amount of 102,807.
Well, are you gonna vote for or against?
For.
Okay.
So you're, you're, you voted, you all voted to?
To approve this amount.
Reduce.
To reduce it to?
To reduce the amount to?
102,807. Finance committee?
I'm gonna look for a motion to recommend library department expense at 102,000, 102,870. That would be a motion.
Has it been accepted by the board selection?
Yes, it reduced by $10, a motion. Second? Don't have a second.
So at this point, it goes in as, as not recommended?
Correct, correct, not recommended.
It was not approved here.
You guys are not recommending?
Not recommended.
To accept 102,870.
Didn't get a second on the motion?
I was taking notes, so I missed the, missed the thing.
That's it.
So we move on from there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Seer, can you clarify? I'm not clear on what happened.
This committee approved the dollar amount of 102,870. The finance committee did not.
So, so, can I, if I can just?
Yep.
What the motion would look like? So in the town meeting warrant, every article will say recommended by board, recommended by finance committee. So in the case that, I think what we would do here is that we would have the amount recommended by board and we have the amount recommended by finance committee. You would reflect, you know, where the positions are.
I, I don't, listen, I, I, can I just say this? I, I get the vote is done. Procedurally, I, I understand, you know, you got kind of confused about where we were at. I should have asked this before you voted, but would there have been an opportunity to? Like, I, I would have still asked for a cut, but I wouldn't have asked for 10. And, and I think, you know, Mano was looking at me and I.
So if the motion would not have passed, then somebody could have made a second motion with a different number. Or I myself could have amended my motion to?
It's not that I'm not, it's not, I didn't vote, I didn't not vote with you to not support you. I just, I feel like we should have discussed maybe a, a different number in between, but that's okay. We're done.
Taxpayers will get?
I'm good, yeah.
Have their input, town reading.
The taxpayers will have a choice. The taxpayers can't from the floor raise the amount. They can, they can, they can bring it down. I have to, I have to do a little research to see whether or not they can pick one or the other there when they have a town meeting. So they may decide at town meeting to, I don't have that answer for you right now, but if it weren't just, you know, without a finance committee and there was a number there, the, the townspeople could only reduce that number, but never increase it. So.
So if you had a finance committee vote for the proposed budget of 112, does that make a difference?
I don't know, I don't know. I, I'll have to get that answer to. For me here, but for you. I, I've not encountered this yet in my career, so I don't want to give you an answer and be wrong. I'd rather clarify. I do want to say that, you know, and it was in my mind, mentioned earlier in the slip, was that we are already one quarter into this budget. You know, we're gonna continue with resolution right now because COVID. And so the reduction for them is gonna hit them harder in this, in the last few quarters of this business year because they've already incurred, basically business as usual expenses up till now. So. Something to consider.
Gary, since we haven't dealt with this in the past or I'm not experienced with it, just in case the finance committee can recommend the budget based off 112,870, if this finance committee would recommend 112,000 today, we may not be able to put that on a warrant, but if we do it now, we wouldn't have to reconvene to do that one motion, correct?
Well, I think you guys have acted.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, our actions are?
I think that there's nothing that prevents this board?
From reconsidering.
From reconsidering this, this one article here, because they still need to set the warrant. And it's, you know, it's not a done deal here until we actually set the warrant and post it and publicize it, you know, call the town meeting. So they would have the opportunity, I would, you know, tomorrow, I would send a, an email out to Eagle and say, hey, you know, could they, could the townspeople pick one or the other here? And then I would have that response by the end of the day for them. Then they can decide if they want to do something different at our next board meeting or at the board meeting or if you set the warrant, I guess. So I, there, there's an opportunity to reconsider this, I think. There's an opportunity to reconsider now. There's also an opportunity to reconsider it for the warrants posted.
So, but since no, no first and second was done on the finance committee, we still could, you know, make a recommendation of 112.
Yes.
You know, so I can make a motion to Chris, support 112,800, what's his recommendation, so.
You have, right?
I could propose that. And if you got a second, we could vote on it as a finance committee for a certain amount, right?
Yeah, did, didn't you do that? I've done it.
We did, that's what I'm asking. If we did do that, then you can determine later on if you could present two of those budgets. I don't know.
Okay, I guess I, I was thinking, no, sir, did you or did you not act on this yet?
We did not.
Okay.
We got, we got a motion and no second.
Okay, I follow.
So my question is how, we didn't support their proposal of 102,000. Does this leave the board, this finance committee open for a different?
If you have any number in mind, you can, you can make that mention.
Are there any other motions from the finance committee on Department 400 budget?
I'll move for, to propose 112,870 in Department 400 budget.
So there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor for recommending the budget for the library at 112,870? All those in favor? All those vote? Motion carries at 112,870. Basically, you have your board saying one thing and the finance committee saying?
How does that proceed, Doug?
That's what I don't know.
Well, my understanding is the board makes the, recommends the warrants and the finance committee either approves the wa, recommends it or doesn't recommend.
Correct.
They don't have, you know.
The board sets, the board sets.
The board's gonna set that.
This is, yeah, it doesn't have any.
It's a recommendation and it will be considered by, end of the week, considered by the?
There you go.
People that show up at town meeting. What I don't know is if, whether or not people at the town meeting?
Can choose from one or the other.
Can choose from one or the other.
Correct.
Okay, so, because they're gonna?
To raise it if they chose to, which they normally can't, they can't raise.
Well, you can't raise it if you had one number there, but if you have two, you know. I'll, I'll get some clarification for you guys.
If you get up two, you're gonna let your taxpayers decide if you cut that funding or not based on what is the start of the?
Well, once again, it, it is customary to have on the warrant, recommended by the board of selectmen and not recommended by the finance committee or vice versa. But for those that are present, for those that are sitting in the comfort of their living room eating popcorn, watching us on video, uh, once again, the people that sit on this board and that committee, we are here to spend the taxpayers' money wisely. People little realize how often that we are confronted in the streets, well, why are the taxes so high? Why are we paying so much? Can't we cut that back? It's no easy task. So when budget cuts come around, at times they are necessary. Everybody involved here is doing their very best. So hopefully that flies with the general public.
Very well.
So just throwing something out there, since we're creating these warrants here, can't the board make a motion to present the town with a second, the townspeople with a second option? Can I make a motion to say, I make a motion to make a second article or second warrant to say, will we approve 112,870? So that'll give the taxpayers the opportunity to pick which one they want to, to support?
Well, you're?
That's what we have.
That's what you have?
No, I made the motion for 102,870. Right, so we make a warrant saying 102,870, the public can vote. Can we not make a second warrant to say, would they approve 112,870? So that the townspeople can have the final decision to pick which one they want to approve?
Well, we just shot it down, so.
Yeah.
We just shot that down, so you can't turn around and say?
No, no, you're not understanding. We shot it down for this warrant. But there's nothing to say we can't create a second warrant that allows the townspeople to choose. We're, we're creating the warrants ourselves.
Yeah, it's risky because each, each, I'm not gonna say you can't, but each, each warrant and articles and articles of business. And so what would happen if both were approved?
Right, what if they were both approved?
Just looking for a motion to provide the right, you know.
Well, is there, is there an option to meet somewhere in the middle? Or you're not, I mean, you made the motion, you're good.
I mean, I, I just followed procedure. I made the motion, we approved or not. I still want to give the townspeople that last final say to what, what they want. But I, I want, we gotta do it legally. You know what I mean?
So when the warrants, their figure will appear?
Yes.
But I don't think they can vote on their figures. Their figure is just approved or not approved.
I'll, I'll do that, I'll have an answer. I think it's tomorrow.
I just don't want to leave it to where we don't have that option.
No, Giselle might not.
Sorry, Giselle, go ahead.
In town meetings, previous town meetings, depending on how the warrant was written, whether it is open-ended or closed-ended, the public can increase an article if it is open-ended. Depends where that period is.
So can we do that for this item here?
But then they could increase it to anything?
Right, I mean, hopefully people don't go crazy. And that's why warrant articles are often closed. And I just want to say there, a while ago, it was stated that the public cannot increase. They can increase an amount. It all depends on how the warrant article is written.
So if you wrote up to 112 and then the discussion can happen there?
You know, and I'd be willing to amend my motion to, to allow that. If that's legal, if we can do that. I don't, I, I don't have an answer for him, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you're talking a long one. I think you can give your answer and come back to us when we can figure it out.
Yeah.
They, they made the recommendation. And, and, and you guys can reconsider this article when we have more legal information?
Correct.
And I do, I don't think you need to act on this tonight.
Okay, let's, let's move on. We're moving on to Public Works, Department 500. Do I have a motion to accept the budget as is? Motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion?
There's mention of some funds that were gonna be taken from somewhere else for the greater?
Yeah, that's gotta fly.
See that?
Yeah, good.
Okay, with a show of hands, do we approve the budget as is? Disapproved, all in favor? Chris, go ahead.
All here from this committee, calling Department 500 as is.
Not based on a motion, it takes a second.
Second? All of them in favor? Moving on to, moving on to Recs, Park 600, Department 600?
So there was a recommendation from the finance committee on that?
There was a recommendation from the finance committee.
Recommendation, I believe, was to raise participation fees in small increments of revenue and adjust technical fees to improve your profits.
So I think, generally speaking, the finance committee was supporting this budget, but they did have those things that they wanted us to consider for, before they did advance of our next budget, was to basically look at our program fees and technical fees, right?
Any other discussion?
Yep.
Go ahead.
On the recreation department, I still have a problem with $2,600 a year for telephone and $3,600 for internet. I have a problem with that.
So, Dan, can you talk about that as a broader discussion for all the departments? Their, their recommendation, I think, was that knowing that we're already leaving our budget and that we don't have any plans in place right now to do, to give you numbers, that they were basically saying, please take a look at what you're using for internet phone and all that stuff before your next budget process. And so I think, you know.
Townwide.
Townwide, townwide.
Okay.
Come back with a plan for the next, you know, we might have, we might have something different that we might, we just need to look at what the options are. But right now, we don't have any.
I think we're looking at, what, 36,000 for the, for the combined?
Correct.
For all departments?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think Jason has some recommendations of where to go.
You'd have some options we could pursue in that. It's a little late in the game to start pursuing those options now, but.
So.
Any, any, any other questions? All in favor, with a show of hands? Disapproved?
I abstain.
Abstain. Chris?
I'll add up in a motion for Department Recreation and Maintenance, Department 600. Present that as, as is. Mark by Adam, taken by Joel, all in favor?
Department 700, townwide insurance, any motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept as is.
We have a second?
Second.
All in, any discussion?
Right here.
Yeah?
I would like to add that we noticed a big drop in our insurance premium as a whole, townwide. Our workers' compensation premium has gone down because our lottery has, has gotten better. I mean, workplace injuries that bring our lottery up, so it's gone down. And I would like to just make a statement that, you know, we have a local insurance provider in town, really shops it out for us, provide a, a great service. We call them all the time. And that, you know, what you don't see here is that they also provide dividends. So if there are no claims, like in the workers' comp, you'll see that on the revenue side. We have to budget in some revenue that we anticipate. So the bottom line here is actually even a little bit better, let's consider the dividend payment that comes to us every year. That's all I have.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the budget? Show of hands, disapprove. Go ahead, Chris.
From the finance committee, recommend townwide insurance, especially Department 700.
I make a motion.
Make a motion like that? Make a motion like that? All, all in favor?
Department seven ten, was there any other discussion here that we need to bring up other than what we discussed already? So we're all set with that one? Same idea with social services, Department seven twenty, we're all set with that one? Dead service, Department seven thirty.
I make a motion to accept Department seven thirty as is.
Any discussion? Nothing, Gary? All in favor? Propose? Gary's, go ahead, Chris.
Motion to accept Department seven thirty as is. Marked by Ken, all over the favor? Gary.
Do we wanna go to, what, pollution control next?
Let's do pollution control, and then we'll add capital reserves, and then a revenue discussion as well.
Okay. So let's go to pollution control, that's Department nine sixty.
I make a motion to accept that, right?
We have a second? Do we have any discussion? Pollution control. We have no discussion, all in favor? Propose? Gary, Gary, the budget. Go ahead, Chris.
Motion on pollution control is Department nine sixty. I make a motion to accept. Second, all over the favor? Go to Gary.
Can you get the capital reserve account down?
Yep.
Do we have, do we have a motion to accept?
The capital reserve account figures as presented?
No. Can we, can we discuss first, or?
We don't have to.
After the motion, right?
Keep it simple, and we don't have confusing motions and stuff like that. Let's just, if we have to discussion a little bit, I know it's not typical here, but.
Then I make motion that we need to adjust the capital reserve budget. I want to see the generator on there for EMA, and I want us to discuss the grader, and then, you know, whatever else we need to actually discuss, so.
Okay. So what figure are you trying to present?
Forty-four three hundred for the emergency generator.
Forty-four thousand three hundred?
And two hundred for the grader repair.
And two hundred thousand for grader.
Is there something else that I was supposed to throw in?
Sidewalk project.
Well, there was, I think we wanted to approach it at a little bit of a different angle than trying to add it to the capital purchases and reserves. Because adding it to the capital purchases and reserve kinda brings it as a tax burden where what we had discussed was something different.
Well, I, I, I see, I, I know where you're going there, Jay. Typically, when we repurpose money, reserve accounts are surplus, we call it repurposing. And so it's confusing when you want, when you write, you want, you want to say, I'm gonna take money in this specific department to fund this instead. The warrant article, the warrant, the way the article would, excuse me, the way that the article would appear would be, shall the voters in out of West Coast consider repurposing that for reserve, like for reserve accounts?
Yeah, so bring it, bring, figure out the whole amount, bring that in as you want it, warrant into the, into the.
So did you take that out of the revenue account? Is that what you're saying?
So if we bring.
Did you take two hundred from the ambulance?
Well, we haven't gone to revenue yet, so.
I, we, we have, it's in our revenue budget, we've already put a place mark for two hundred out of the ambulance reserve to fund even the revenue cost.
Well, we haven't been to revenue yet.
What you're proposing is not to have that in there.
Right, and I'll explain, I can explain why.
And you wanna put a transfer, I, listen, I, I don't, to me, however you figure the warrant out or you do whatever, those are just, I mean, tell me what motion I have to make, and those are safety in the roads. I mean, we have to do something, so. Those were the two items I was interested in discussing, however the warrant needs, I mean, the.
So do we readdress the figures that she just brought up? Is that, is that how you wanna proceed?
We're gonna get to the same point with this, it's just the language, if you will. So in order to take, transfer monies out of the, like the ambulance reserve, we're gonna have to ask the voters to do that. So if you play that out at town meeting, you know, you kinda have to, this capital reserve discussion and those transfers kinda have to happen being in hand. So if we're gonna ask the voters to approve a warrant article for X amount of dollars for various capital reserve projects, that has to tie in to the fact that we're bringing in that, that revenue from, from the ambulance reserve, okay? So we need to get the authorization to take the money out of the reserve first. And the townspeople, if they don't, if they don't grant that to you, then you're not, you're not gonna be able to do that that way. So.
So.
So regardless of, I believe that these items that were mentioned by Lori, regardless of whether or not the townspeople approved the transfer of funds, I think those items need to be handled in this budget anyway. So I would say we can approve those addition of items into the capital purchase and reserve, and then also when we get to revenue, ask for that transfer, which is already there.
I'm thinking that's the proper procedure, but I, I can't, can't be sure, but I, I believe that that would be the right way to do it.
Well, as long as, as long as the taxes are not going up, if they don't agree to the two hundred, so however it needs to be, if the two hundred's not agreed to, then we need to change something, 'cause we don't want the mill rate going up.
The warrant article is gonna have to read as such that shall voters in out of West Coast approve transferring X amount of dollars for the ambulance reserve to fund capital reserve projects.
Right.
Whether or not you want it defined for a specific item, okay, I, I don't necessarily think you have to do that. You're gonna have a bottom line number at your cap, on your capital reserves, and you're just basically only gonna reduce what you need to raise in taxes to fund that capital reserve department, if you will. So yes, you could have an article that said, I'll take X amount of money here to buy it, to rebuild the grader. Could do it that way.
But you know, it sounds like Lori, like there's no, I mean, there's no guarantee here. I mean, if the townspeople say no.
Like, if we don't do it the way Gary just said, which I think is what Jason was suggesting, if the warrant doesn't specifically say we want to take two from here to fix this, then if we put it in the revenue and the voters say no, then we're gonna be
Looking at an increase.
Over budget, and we're gonna be looking at an increase that we will be responsible for, and I'm not okay with that.
Right, well, that's why I wanted to do that.
We need the equipment fixed, but we, we can't raise taxes, so however.
So would we go to the revenue side first to address this?
I think that there could be wording in the articles that define, so sometimes when we have a warrant article, and we'll, we'll put in bold an explanation underneath that describes the transaction, if you will. So I, we can, we can work on the warrant to achieve what we want it to achieve. I think that, you know, I don't necessarily think we need to decide with the warrant language is here tonight. I know the intent is to take money out of the reserve to fund capital, like the grader. And let's work on the warrant language at a, at a later time, so that we don't end up in that situation where.
Is the total amount coming out of the ambulance reserve?
Well, we had, we had approved, we had discussed applying a place mark for at first one fifty coming out of the ambulance reserve, and then that was the discussions with the, with the finance committee in our last joint meeting, going to two hundred. And, and I'm okay with that. I support that. I don't support going over that, only because if we can't duplicate that revenue transfer next year, that, that looks like a tax increase.
Well, we wouldn't have to, because what my plan is, is to, whatever money we pull out of there is for a one-time item, like the grader and the generator, which we only have to do once. So if we do that transfer this year, whether, let's say it's two hundred forty-four thousand three hundred. If we do that one-time transfer, two hundred forty-four thousand, we shouldn't, unless the generator breaks and the grader breaks again next year, we shouldn't have to duplicate that. So that's where I wanna make sure that we can, to not bring up the taxes, we take that transfer of two hundred forty-four thousand three hundred dollars, I believe it is, to cover the cost of that, and we wouldn't have to do it again.
Yes.
Where does the, where does the figure forty-four thousand for the generator come from?
I believe that was a.
That was a.
Ken's.
From the estimate that we all have in our.
Jim got a budget estimate.
Did we get, did we get a quote from just one place?
No, no, that's just a budget estimate for budgeting purposes.
Okay.
If it's approved, then it goes to bid.
Right.
So it could be lower, but. I mean, we can make it forty-five, you can make it forty-two, and say there's not, you know, we can't go over that with our bid, whatever, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm not on Facebook there. Okay, I just want you guys to know.
So do you wanna, wanna give your figures of exactly forty-five?
The forty-four three, though, we have to clarify, does not, like, if we're transferring from the ambulance fund, it covers the grader. Forty-four three comes out of, right now we're at three oh five savings. The forty-four three brings that down to two sixty.
Okay.
Which is what, three quarter of a mil, but we still have a lot of broken stuff. Am I right with that? Yeah. So I don't know, how, how does the, how does the motion?
So I guess the discussion right now and, and the motion would be that we are looking to increase the figure from what was proposed of three hundred and fifty-two thousand to five ninety-six, five hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred. My calculation's correct? I believe that's the figure.
By adding the two hundred thousand plus the forty-four.
Plus the forty-four three. Right.
Five ninety-six, three hundred, is that what you said?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, before we finish that, the finance committee did discuss adding that extra money in the budget for a possible future of different departments, so that's where we would do this as well. I remember, Chris, what you had said, you wanted to put money aside for.
What was that number? Sorry.
Five hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred.
No, but what was the generator number?
Forty-four three.
Forty-four three. Sorry.
Chris?
I'm trying to look through what we had recommended. The other, so there was other recommendations that we provided to the board.
Yeah, so one of them was to, one of your recommendations was to look at leasing a fire truck. Obviously, wouldn't hit this budget, the amount, but it's still something we should propose this budget, so they can start looking.
Isn't that already built in here?
No.
No, I mean, we have to get the, the decision to, to make order, so if Jim, I'm understanding Jim, if Jim recalls, the builder, it would take a year to get the fire truck, so we're, we're quite a ways out, and I think, Jim, did you say the first payment would be in the arrears, basically, in the back end of? Because sometimes, depending on which lease company you go with, then they can do your first payment first right away, or on the back end?
The day it's delivered, the day it's delivered, you pay that.
You make your first payment, so it's on the front end. So that would hit this fiscal year, but hit the next one. So, but I mean, they, they did make a general recommendation, it's something I think that they would want this board to consider moving forward, and you guys will have to decide to put in a town anymore, if you so choose so, to authorize, if the townspeople will authorize you folks to tell Jim, go ahead and order that fire truck.
Right, so I don't think we have any numbers to present. I think we're just asking you to consider funding that truck. However, you need to do it on your end, but clearly it needs to happen.
So on the board, we need to make a motion to allow him to proceed with.
That's a separate.
That's just a recommendation, that's separate from this line.
That doesn't fall under this.
That, that, there's no number.
Nope, there's no number, so it's not gonna affect it.
But, but if you want it, you guys had discussed, which I think we all have, picking a couple of the reserve funds and starting to, like, look ahead and fund those. I mean, are there small amounts of money that we want to try to fund a couple, you know, public works? Somewhere where we think. You know, they used to put in, what, twenty or thirty thousand a year, fifty in some cases?
Fifty on the fire truck, correct.
That was our, that's basically what our recommendation was, for you to consider doing that again, because I, I, it's pretty clear that, you know, even if you order a new Hummer truck that they need now, in two or three years from now, you know, they're gonna need another one. So if you don't put that on a cycle starting now, you're gonna wind up needing two trucks in some budget cycle somewhere along the line, and you're gonna see a tax increase, where now, if you approach it now, you start biting it off a little bit at a time. You know it's coming, right? We know it's coming, so our suggestion is to consider that now and start approaching it in this budget. So next year, you're not like, well, we bought one new truck, and now we just lost the tankers, now we gotta do another one already. So if you start building their reserve account now, they have something to work with in the future. Currently, he doesn't have that in the budget.
Well, and I think public works is in the same boat.
Exactly.
We have a twenty-year-old dock up at the lake, and, I mean, can we put twenty-five per in a, at least they go with something, I don't. Gary, are you looking at numbers? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
I'm showing we're, we're at two sixty, to be at half a mil, we'd be at one eighty, so I think I'm showing we have, you know, maybe seventy-five to play with, seven eighty. Not that I want.
You're coming up with that figure?
Well, I'm trying to give, you know, I know nobody, I asked this question with them, and it was a little hard to answer, and I, I know everyone has a different idea of how they're looking at this. I would like to give the taxpayer some kind of savings, whether it's half a mil or a, I would love to give them a mil, you know, and say we, we, we cut a mil off the budget, but then if we cut a mil off the budget and, and grow, doesn't get plowed, because the plow truck grew, then we're not doing any better. So I'm looking at, well, what could I live with in my head? Maybe half a mil, you know, and so.
So that's how you determine that seventy-five?
Well, in my head, yeah, just kinda, like, the departments, everybody cut, everybody did good, the revenue side looks good, this. So I, I feel like we can, we can have some type of relief, but we also have to be responsible, and, 'cause we leave it as is, yes, it's great, but then, like Chris said, we're, we're, you know, we're in a little bit of trouble here.
I think, I think the reason why that recommendation is there, we're facing that exact situation today. You have a grader that needs to be replaced, you have a fire, fire truck, and there's no reserves anywhere to deal with these things in the future. So if you don't start approaching it now, even though we've already, you know, looked at some of these things and can address them, we can address the grader, 'cause you're fortunate enough to have an ambulance reserve that may be able, the taxpayers may be, God willing, to allow you to fix the grader so we can keep our roads clean this year, but if that grader breaks down in ten years, they got, they got nothing in the reserve anywhere. And it's the same with the fire department, you know? You're, we're fortunate enough to have an ambulance service that does very well. That may help solve some of the trouble this year, but if we don't address it now, our recommendation is to address it now.
When you put a recommendation like this together, you, we, we would be addressing an actual figure, is that, is that the way I'm approaching this?
Like Lori goes, we would, we would add to this capital purchase reserve, twenty-five thousand for fire, twenty-five thousand, all the work.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five, we're thirty and thirty, and I don't know, we're all a little crazy, what?
Right now, I'm trying to do the real-time math here and not, I've not spread out the cost for the library increase in years, so that's what we're hoping, so it's not gonna make any difference.
I'm pretending that ten thousand cut didn't happen.
Right, so right now, you know, if my math is right here, with the revenue that we have already, that we've not reconsidered here tonight, that we are showing a two-point-three percent increase.
Of what?
A two-point-three percent increase in our expense budget. Okay, but we also bring in more revenue, so the net right now is two hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, less than last year, two sixty-nine seventy, so three quarters of a mil.
That's a three-quarters of a mil.
You have two sixty-nine, yeah, okay.
Two sixty-nine seventy, so it's just.
I came out, rounding out or rounding down, I put two sixty.
The library cut sticks, then you make that quarter of a million dollars, so you're roughly three-quarters of a mil. Now, in, in the capital, I, I do wanna say that in discussions with, with Lori, that we have our sidewalk project, M D O T sidewalk project, our match on that is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, okay? So we have already made two appropriations in seventeen-five, we've already expended, expended engineering costs. So right now, we have left in there about nineteen thousand, you see that in the P L.
Yeah, yeah, and you would spend some, you said?
Between now and next year.
How much had you spent, though, you said?
Seventy-five minus, well, seventy, thirty-five thousand minus nineteen, what?
So you have thirty, so, but the thirty-five, the original thirty-five counts, because you spent it, it counts toward that.
Well, we didn't spend at all, we spent it in the year in the reserve.
So we're not short as much as, as, what, fifteen, we're short thirty thousand plus seventeen. I was gonna suggest we take that feasibility study money and transfer it, so I wasn't really on that. I was gonna suggest we take that feasibility study money and transfer it, so I wasn't really on that yet, but.
So we spent about sixteen so far, uh, we have nineteen in our short right now, what we need to raise over the next two budget cycles, uh.
Our match is what, thirty-five thousand?
Our match is what?
Eighty.
Our match is one thirty, you know, we need.
We have to match one thirty, because.
Our match is one thirty.
It's an eighty-twenty, right?
It's an eighty-twenty, but we're capped at, uh, Keith, are you still here? No.
No, it's not.
So while he's, while he's listening to that figure, I mean.
So we still have, we still have to raise down five for our match over the next two budget cycles.
Ninety-five thousand?
Forty-five per, no, forty-seven, fifty, forty-seven-five.
But that's, so that, does that include the seventeen-five that's already in there?
Yes. Uh, I'm, I'm, yes, that's already there.
So seventeen-five is in there plus ninety-five?
Yes.
We need a motion to extend the meeting.
Yep.
I'll make the motion, go behind the two hour.
In a second. All paper.
So even if we move the feasibility study money, we still need to move an extra maybe fifteen, right?
So we transferred the feasibility, the twenty thousand for feasibility, we have seventy-five to raise over two budget cycles.
There's five per, there's fifty-seven sixty per in, in the dash two six.
We'd have to do thirty, we would have to do, uh, thirty-seven five this year, thirty-seven five next year to get there.
So you're saying, if we transfer the feasibility money, then we have to, we have to add an additional thirty-seven five right now and an additional next year. I've been working off an eighty thousand dollar number that I was given when this started, so this is confusing me.
Yeah, we, that's because I was looking at something else, I was look, not looking at the right information.
Okay.
Our, our, our commitment is one thirty, uh, we were budgeting it seventeen-five, uh, the original scope of the project, when it started back in twenty, twenty seventeen is when it was initiated. But the project was expanded to the both sides of that main street from fourteen pad to sixteen pad. Okay, so our match under the original scope was at seventeen-five per year, and, and that's where I had that number, okay? But the project was expanded to the both sides, and that was a cool, uh.
So it was one thirty minus, you've already put thirty-five in there.
No, we don't have.
Whether it got spent or not.
We have, I'm put, we have thirty-five that we've allocated, but we spent about sixteen of that already in engineering. So right now.
Right, Gary, that's what I'm saying, so you put, you, I, don't, don't, never mind what you spent, we, we needed to, we needed to match one thirty.
Yep.
We, we had thirty-five already, right? And we're putting another seventeen-five, so it's seventy-seven five we need to come up with. One thirty minus the thirty-five that, like, you've already put in for two years.
Yeah.
Seventeen-five is going in this year.
If we do seventeen-five.
Right, so, well, that's already there, I'm saying, I'm asking how much more we have to come up with, so now, we have to find seventy-seven five, point five, over two budget cycles.
Hold on, so we have, our match is one thirty, okay? We have already committed thirty-five, you know, okay? What's, what's already in our reserve, plus what will be expended out of there for engineering.
Right.
So.
Plus seventeen-five that's already in this budget.
Right. Well, it's in this budget, but we, we're not actively.
No, no, right, but it's already, it's already, when we are talking, you and I, about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars left, that seventeen-five is already there.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we need seventy-seven five more.
Correct.
In two budget cycles. So now, we can get twenty-five thousand from transfers.
Twenty, forty, uh.
So we can't touch that health number?
Oh, well, we could.
Where were you looking to get that figure?
There's that old health reserve account there, that's three, so the sum that leaves like sixty-two thousand, so.
And that figure was what, twenty, twenty-two?
The feasibility study is dash thirty, it's in your, if you look at your capital.
I remember seeing it a lot.
It's the dash thirty, it's twenty thousand, there's a health, which is a dash twenty-six, there's fifty-seven sixty that's been there a long time.
Right.
And, um, uh, there's an almost negligible five hundred dollars in the one fifty, if, if, if that's what the auditor comes up with, but, um, so it fifty-two.
So it cuts to fifty-two-five.
So you're looking at roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars this year and the remainder next year.
Twenty-six to fifty.
So your seventeen-five would go up to twenty-seven five this year, twenty-seven five next year. If we made those transfers from those, from those, uh.
It would be the twenty-seven.
No, it has to go up, it has to go up, that plus seventeen-five.
And you did forty-three, seven, fifty.
So forty-three, seven, fifty? Sorry, you guys, I just, uh.
Better to be right around the corner later.
Well, yeah, and I, I, that's what I'm saying, like, I, we can't do this and then have a surprise, um. So we have maybe what, thirty bucks left, we can put in fire department or the public works? No? Thirty, thirty thousand.
Or half a mil.
I mean, it depends what you guys wanna do, like, I'm sitting here saying, like, I wanna at least give the taxpayer half a mil, but you don't have to do that, or we cannot fund any of this and do a mil, like, you guys need to say something here, it's not all just me.
I don't think we should aim and say, let's aim for this number and figure out what we can do, we know we need, we wanna put twenty-five for the fire, twenty-five for public work. We just said forty-three, seven, fifty for the sidewalk project, is there anything else that we need? That, that's what we need to look at, not.
You don't have to fully do the fifty percent of the sidewalk project this year, you do, you do a greater share this year.
But if we do a greater share next year, it's a chance that we might have to bring the taxes up next year to cover that greater share. If we do it half and half, then, you know what I mean? Why only reduce by half a mil this year if we have to bring it up by a quarter of a mil next year? If we do half and half, then it's gonna be the same next year, we're not have to adjust.
But now, twenty-something years of board meetings taught you to be quiet, it's not a good thing anymore there, now you gotta talk.
No, I, I want some part of that mil rate to go down, it doesn't have to go down a full, but it has to go down.
So how do you guys feel about the twenty-five, twenty-five, and forty-three, is that? Do you understand what we're doing there?
Yeah.
Does it make sense?
So that brings us to what, as far as what we're gonna have to, to play for, for reduction? In the mil rate. Does it leave anything?
One sixty, it's not a.
One sixty is what, not even a, you know, a third.
Not enough for me, but.
It's a third, really, is what it is, it becomes a third. So, less than a third.
So those are the hard decisions, right?
Yeah.
So here's where the, here's where the rubber meets the road, and here's where, you know, I'm gonna provide you with whatever it's worth. The question was asked before, how much would be a good amount to save for me? All of it, I'd be great, pay no taxes, but I know it's not really reasonable. At the same time, we're talking about essential services, so you kinda have to find a way to fund it, and we're, you're already taxed twenty-two here. You know, you, you wanna bring taxes down, but in the end of the day, it doesn't look like you're gonna bring down a whole lot. If you try to bring them down and avoid this, this year, you may be looking at a bigger problem next year, you know, it's, and I think that's what led us to where we're at today. So that's the, that's the drawback.
Right, so how do you feel about these numbers here that we presented?
Me personally, I, I want my taxes to go down, but I also understand that we need to do these things. I just, I, this isn't something you're gonna fix in one budget cycle, okay? This is something that's gonna take years to fix the problem.
A lot of years.
And that's why, decisions that, like, looking at libraries and looking at fire departments and taking money from ambulances and all sorts of things are big decisions, they hurt. But that's what you're faced with, that's the C Q. I put my name on that ballot, so you guys put on that ballot, it's your decision, I'm gonna leave it up to you. I'm just telling you that, if you're asking me, we need to provide these people with the equipment that they guys do their job with, and right now, we're not giving them the resource that they need. So if you wanna adjust it this year, go right ahead, if not, well, we'll do it next year.
That's what we're doing, we're, we're giving, we're giving something, we're giving twenty-five for fire, twenty-five public work, plus the sidewalk.
I think it's a valid attempt to try to get it going somewhere, you gotta start somewhere.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, and the last figure we were calculating was what, four?
Three, seven, fifty, I believe is the number we came up with for the sidewalk. That's that seventeen and the twenty.
You're doing the math, Eric? Our calculators better work, cause if we went here with an increase, I'm gonna ruin.
We gotta come up with, you need to come up with seventy-seven-five for your sidewalk.
Huh?
You need to come up with seventy-seven-five for your sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
To get to your one thirty, so if you, but if you repurpose the, the sidewalk, um, town office study, it gives you twenty potentially going into the, uh.
Is it exactly twenty?
Yeah, it's, it's in your G L.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So your, your sum is in, you know, fifty-seven, and if you go for the, the health reserve, you hit that, you're at the fifty thousand dollars, and so, to me, you know, if you go, fifty-fifty between this year and next year? Or a mix?
So that's where the forty-three, so, so we're saying forty-three, seven, fifty for the sidewalk instead of seventeen-five?
Right, right, so that's in total an additional ninety-three thousand, seven, fifty.
Well.
If you did forty-three, seven, fifty this year for the sidewalk project, next year, you would have to do twenty-six, two, fifty to make that bounce.
Now we have to do forty-three, seven, fifty again.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yes. That's how the math came out a while ago.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
If you have to go to the taxpayers, and I know you've been working hard on this, but if you have to go back to the taxpayers.
Why aren't you working harder?
That's a very simple question, it's because I am of a totally, totally different mindset.
No, I know, I know.
Uh, with this, uh, but, but if, if you have to go to the taxpayers and tell them that you're increasing, uh, the budget by half a mil, uh, I, I don't think you should be bearing any feelings of guilt for this. We are here to provide services to the taxpayers, and if the taxpayers don't like it, I think it's up to the taxpayers to show up to town meeting and start telling us where they want to cut. If we have to cut services, the only way you can reduce your budget is by cutting services, that's very, very simple. It's a simple line of ethics. And if the taxpayers don't like what they're paying, it's up to them to show up to town meeting and assist us and let us know where they want cuts in order for their taxes to go down, very simple.
I, I just want to say, we are not looking at an increase.
Yeah, it's just a slight decrease.
A slight decrease.
Are you that optimistic for next year's cycle? Who knows?
One year at a time.
I do.
I mean, that's what we're gonna do, one year at a time, but I think this will allow us.
I, I would, I would love next year's cycle to get together as a group before we're here.
Yeah.
And get the taxpayers in, get, have some workshops, say, okay, you know, it's very obvious, you know, I've been hit for, for weeks. Cut the library, cut the library, cut the library, then, then people showed up, and, and no offense to them, I know a lot of them have young kids, but now we're in the stuff like the ambulance and the fire department and, and everyone left, and, so we're not gonna ever hear, I wanna get those people in, and I wanna say, okay, like, you guys, what service do you want us to get rid of so that we can make your taxes go down?
Bring up the budget three mils, you'll get them here.
Definitely gonna do that, but you gotta, you gotta think.
We can't do it in he, in this budget, we just can't.
You gotta think too, that forty-three, seven, fifty is gonna be here this year and next budget.
And next year.
But the budget after that, you're looking at not having that, so that's a potential path to.
But then the plow truck at the lake's gonna be dead, so.
Exactly, so then we can always take that forty-three, seven, fifty and, and re, and add an extra ten thousand to the fi, to fire, and an extra ten thousand to public work.
Yeah.
Nothing to say we can't change that value next, two years from now when, when this other item disappears.
But it does surprise.
You're right, Dan, we can only do it.
It does surprise me that essential services is what we're talking about, and everybody left. Hell.
But, you know, a lot of people have kids.
Not, not everybody, not everybody.
Well, not everybody, but, the majority.
Just a tough one, Steve.
And also, listen, this process is not easy for anybody, whether you're sitting on that side table, this side of the table, or the town office, or anywhere else. Whether it's a school budget or the town budget, it's not easy, okay? And nobody wants a, a, an increase in their taxes, and I think what's being put forth here, including those suggestions, is not gonna increase taxes. Is it what everybody wants and we're not getting a big reduction, yeah, that sucks. But you don't have a lot of community members here to support you and to give you guidance, so you were put there and elected by people to make a decision, and you need to accept the responsibility and make the decision and move forward, if they don't like it, they can put their name on the ballot the following year, it's as simple as that, guys. It's as simple as that, if you feel that's where we need to go, I'm supportive of that as well, then make your move and let's move on. So to sit here and try to figure it out this year, it can happen.
Since you made the initial motion, do you wanna amend your motion to include the actual dip, the value now?
Well, is my math right, did someone else do it, three thirty-eight?
Zero, five, zero?
Zero, five, zero.
That's what I have.
Uh, where are you going?
Three thirty-eight, zero, five, zero would be the total added to the capital purchases. It would be forty-three, seven, fifty to the sidewalk match, cause we were short.
Twenty-five and twenty-five.
So, right now, I'm looking at. I've got two hundred thousand for the, for the grader rebuild, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I've got forty thousand for, uh, reserve for fire, uh, fire department equipment repairs.
Yeah.
Right.
Forty-four three for the generator, power switch.
Yep.
Okay, um.
Did you wanna change that to not exceed forty-five like we talked about, just to make sure we can cover it, or? Sure it's gonna come out lower, but I think, I think you mentioned that.
We have five thousand for the recreation facility reserve, tennis courts, we've been starting to reserve money there to make repairs of, uh, to those tennis courts. Um, two sixty-four for the road project reserve, forty-three, seven, fifteen for the sidewalk match, twenty-five for the safety room, uh, safety complex roof replacement, am I right?
Yes.
I mean, that's what tested there so far.
Right, and the two hundred for the grader doesn't go there, is that what I'm understanding? Have I missed that?
Well, in my spreadsheet here, it's going here because it's gonna calculate it out, so I'm not putting my, that grader anywhere else, but right here, it's gonna appear differently on, on the warrant, but.
And then Jason mentioned twenty-five and twenty-five, but didn't you say you wanted to put more in the roof account so that we could try to do that in one shot next year instead of, because we thought it would be cheaper, which makes sense to me.
I think there's a savings if we do the, uh, the roof.
Can, can we ask Gerald the question, or?
Yeah, he's here.
Can we on the spot, Gerald? The roof, the roof bid you had, the roof bid you had for us, was that the whole amount? Did you bid it out in three, or did you get a bid for the whole amount and then just give us?
I gave it in three, so it'd be less chance of raising the taxes doing in three sections.
Right.
Yeah.
So to Dan's point, that if we put money in this budget and money in next budget and do it all at once, we would save money, chances are.
Yeah, it would be saving, savings, uh, the, the, the slices of, of doing it, uh, two, three slices, and redoing it over again the following year or two years. It takes two years to build up, to build up fifty thousand, the, the overall cost was about a hundred thousand.
The overall cost is what?
Overall cost is a hundred thousand. The size of the roof is a hundred, about a hundred thousand, so that's why I specified in.
Why did I have fifty thousand in my head? If I had fifty, would that have been just part of it?
What did I have, fifty thousand in my head? If I had fifty, would that have been just part of it?
Cause he was gonna ask her.
It was like the first section, the bigger section. Then it was another fifty thousand for the other two sections, but I separated that into two, again, take the name, it would be into three sections, or three years. Instead of raising taxes than doing it in one year.
But it was a little bit costlier to split it up.
Correct, because.
Which is what he was getting at. If you could get, get it all done in one shot, right now he's totaling about a hundred thousand. If you do it all at once, it may be, I'll say nine thousand, I don't know what it is, but.
Maybe two or three thousand per, less, per, per slice or two years. Like, again, that was last year's price, but.
Why are you laughing?
Cause we're cutting, we're cutting in our, our mil rate savings all the time.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to touch that. I'm just saying, you know, Jason said twenty-five, twenty-five. If, if we're gonna ask to lease a fire truck and we're giving him forty to fix the two we have now, we might be safe to put twenty-five in public works and take the other twenty-five to sound about and put it toward the roof. And then the next budget, put the other fifty, so that he could do the roof at one time before it starts leaking. If we're gonna save money that way, you know, like, are, are we just wasting money about trying to cut this and, and, you know? Dan, I think Dan had a good point with that.
Well, I mean, we're, we're discussing what, two or three thousand dollar savings here, if we did it?
So right now, again, if my math is correct, I'm still in net decrease. The budget is, is up. The expense budget is up two point seven percent from last year.
What's that?
Factoring in the revenue of four fourteen, one oh two, above additional revenue from last year. Our net right now is two thirty-four, seven twenty. So you're still, you know, you're still net.
We're still, so that's, that's more like two-thirds of them then. Roughly.
Roughly.
So can we, can we entertain the, the thought of taking that additional amount that we want to put on the roof out of the ambulance reserve?
I, I would, I would not, I would not at this point, because they have, um, it's just, I mean, you're looking at me. Here we go.
How much are we already taking out of the reserve, or we're up to what, four hundred?
Oh no, just two fifty.
All of it, we're taking out the additional two hundred as well.
We're taking out two right now. That's what I have in the budget.
No, we're changing that two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand. It's not four hundred and eighty or whatever.
But then there's two hundred grand in the grader.
Yeah.
That's what that's worth.
That's what that's worth.
It's the same two hundred.
So that's the same. Oh, okay.
We're, we're changing the two hundred that we discussed.
Okay, I thought we were taking out two and then.
No, no.
We're changing the two hundred we discussed.
Cause I just, the only one we have is, is, you know, we will be needing another ambulance here in the next year coming here. It's not as much as, are all those ones you're performing inspection and, hopefully you'll pass, and we can, we'll end the year by. Just so we're aware that we will need another ambulance again, uh, inspector over the next coming year, so.
Did you guys, like, I was, as I was plugging in numbers, I wasn't hearing you guys, but did you guys say, put fifty, fifty more out of the ambulance, take fifty more to make that two fifty, or you still have two hundred?
Jason said, just said fifty more.
No, I was saying two fifty.
Cause right now, what I've given you there, that net, is, is at two hundred from the ambulance.
Okay, yeah.
So the net, the net of two thirty-four, seven twenty, it's at two hundred. If I put that at, if I put that at.
Change it by fifty thousand.
Fifty.
But don't we have to fund the undesignated fund there? I, I'm sorry, I don't wanna empty the ambulance or, or cut the ambulance too much. Like, that's a conversation we have to have later on, so it's not really a budget conversation, but the undesignated fund needs to, we need to do something with that.
How much does an ambulance cost?
Right now, back in, back in March, I asked for a report, that we're, you guys kind of looking ahead for the one that we need to replace, and they're all two hundred and twenty thousand. Is that new or is that a rebound? I mean, we can explore other options as well, and I've, I've.
So like, like two eighty-four, seven twenty.
So what is the figure?
With the two fifty?
Yeah.
It's net decrease of two eighty-four, seven twenty. Two eighty? Two eighty-four, seven twenty.
So, so even with the two fifty we're taking out of the ambulance, it, it leaves four hundred fifty thousand in there, which is enough to cover the ambulance that we need.
Would you be okay with that?
He's never gonna say yes to it, but I mean, you're doing.
I, I, yeah.
No, we didn't wanna strip him, like.
At the end of the day, I mean, I, I, I can say no, but does it matter? I mean, the contributors might be sold.
Well, I mean, obviously, I don't want you guys to think money out of money.
Cause we don't want you to be the same bogeyman right now.
Right, well, I know, and I, I, I get that too, but I'm also a fair-minded guy, and you know, and, and we, we are. I'm fair, I, we need to help each other out, and I'm, and I'm okay with that, but we gotta use this cause, because I got my needs as well.
Yeah.
With it in the part, you know.
With that.
I think the target's always been about half a million. I think we're good at half a million, so we're close.
Yeah, well, that doesn't factor in how much money at the end of this budget that they're gonna put back in there. I just took, I just took roughly seven hundred thousand, uh, yeah, and, and subtracted the two hundred fifty without taking into consideration what's going back in. And it is more than seven hundred, so. So then you're proposing, instead of twenty-five thousand for the roof, you do fifty thousand? I mean, we gotta put a number down, so is that what you're looking at?
For the what?
For the roof.
The roof.
Oh.
Instead of twenty-five thousand.
I didn't, I didn't miss that number. Did you guys change that?
No, that's a word, he's questioning it now.
Eric, right now, you have the generator in there, the grader, and the sidewalk match, correct?
I'll, I'll list it up for you one more time.
Well, the, the figure that, that we were just discussing, that three thirty-eight, zero five zero includes that plus the twenty-five for the roof and, and the other twenty-five there that we were discussing.
So.
Well, no, he just added, I.
So right now, I'll, I'll recap. Two hundred for the grader, forty-four, uh, fire department for equipment repairs, forty-four, three hundred for the generator switch, five thousand for recreation facility reserve, uh, two sixty-four five for the tennis court, uh, for the side, for the road project reserve, uh, M D O T sidewalk match, forty-three, seven fifty, safety complex roof replacement project, twenty-five thousand. The grand total of that right now is six twenty-two, five fifty.
And what did that do to our, our number?
Right now, are there any errors in these formulas?
Almost doubled, I think. We need to say that. Two twenty-five here.
That's what I.
Our net, our net when factoring revenue is two hundred eighty-four, seven twenty, decrease. But it's a two point seven percent increase in the expense budget.
Because you added fifty more from the ambulance.
Yeah. We were at two thirty-four, seven twenty.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure I understand.
So, uh, did, did you include the two, the two twenty-five thousands we, we wanted to put, fire?
Not yet.
Public works, okay. That's what I'm trying to figure out. I wanna know what, if we do that and we add the twenty-five for the, for the roof, what that gives us? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
You're still gonna be at two hundred, and you're still gonna be over half a mil.
Okay, so then is that what you wanna do? You wanna do, change the twenty-five to fifty? We're just trying to make, move it along and make decisions. Is that, is that what we're planning on doing?
Well, I'll add, yeah, I'll add that to my motion, if that's, I don't even know where I'm at anymore with the motion.
No, that's what, that's what I'm trying to question, Mike.
Yeah, okay, let's add that.
I've got a question on the roof. Gerald, am I correct that we're not addressing any roof issues this year? We're too late into the season, correct?
Right.
Okay, so if, if, if we put money aside for the roof in this budget, when we get to the next budget, will that be in time? What, what would be your timeframe next summer?
After the budget, after, after June.
Okay, after town meeting, so you'd have double.
Get a town meeting, get, get another twenty-five thousand. I don't need a hundred thousand now. I don't, I don't wanna eat steak now, everybody else eats cereal.
Well, the thing with this is.
Which I'd rather have hamburger for everybody.
So the thing with this, Gerald, is you get fifty thousand dollars in this budget, and if we keep it next year, you get fifty thousand next year, and that would keep us even with, right, so you'd have your full hundred dollars.
You'd have, you'd be, you'd be ready to go.
Right.
Right, I had fifty thousand after next June, so I can do one section and then work on the other section after that. Depending who's, as long as they give you food.
Well, if you got a, a bid, you could do the whole thing if it passes next June.
I think you understand that correctly.
No.
Cause we're giving you fifty now.
Yeah, we're doing fifty now, fifty next year, so.
Fifty now and next June is the same, is the same board. If it passes, you could do the whole roof next summer and hopefully be cheaper in that way, is what we're trying to accomplish.
Then somebody's gotta start somewhere. You don't wanna raise taxes.
We wouldn't have to be raising taxes, because I'm already, you know, you'd have the full amount and complete the project in one shot next summer.
With two, with two, two budget cycles. It'd just be less of a decrease in the tax return, that's all.
It would be a less of a decrease, but it means no increase next year to cover the rest.
Y'all wanna get shot in the cycle.
Yeah.
They're still in shock from last year, so we should be able to suffer through this one.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so what is the figure that we're?
So if Gary could add the two twenty-fives and the additional roof twenty-five, that'd give us.
I don't know if I'm right there, but three sixty-three, twenty-five, oh?
Kevin, twenty-five is not a lot for asphalt and roads, but would you rather see that twenty-five extra in that account or in the capital account? I would like to know your opinion.
The capital account for where?
For equipment eventually, if we try to put a little bit every year to get to a, a truck at some point.
Either way, we're.
Okay. I just wondered if.
If you put it in the, in the account, we'll probably have a truck six months a year earlier, but our roads are gonna deteriorate and then vice versa, if it's.
Yeah.
You don't have the things on.
It'll help, it's not.
He said that, then it should be designated as such.
So Gary, I would show two oh nine, seven twenty. If we, if we match.
Two oh nine. To the good?
If we, if we match, our net would be two oh nine, seven twenty.
You're doing right now, putting fifty in that, in that roof project?
Adding another, an extra twenty-five to the roof.
Okay.
And Jason's suggesting twenty-five to the fire department and twenty-five to public works, capital.
Right.
Okay, so you're putting fifty instead of twenty-five at safety complex roof replacement?
Yeah.
You're putting, uh, how much more at the fire department?
Twenty-five thousand trying to build toward something.
Capital.
To feed their truck fund.
So that becomes sixty-five? Forty, you're adding what, twenty-five to that?
No, they don't have anything now for the, the truck.
But we're talking about fire department, we're talking about.
So, so you've got your forty thou, hold on, you've got your forty thousand dollars we're giving them to fix their trucks, right?
Right.
Okay, ignore that. Now we wanna give them an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, like we used to do to replace their trucks.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve, correct?
Right, so.
And the same thing with public works, twenty-five thousand for capital reserves. Okay?
And then, uh, I'm just gonna use an old title here, I'll change it later, but somewhere in these columns here.
We can't see it anyway.
Must be some scribbling on that.
You should see all the white out on this screen.
So I'm at six seventy-two, two fif, making sure, we had some.
How you doing with minutes, Natalie?
A lot of them.
Lori, do you, I, while you're looking at that, do we have a figure that you wanna propose now?
Well, if my number matches there, if we matched, then that.
I don't think you're gonna match.
But at least we get the right number.
Okay, we don't match, and you must set the taxes by yourself in the, in the fall, cause I'm not getting the crap for this. You guys too there, I just want you to know, she's quiet over there, there, but this one has had a lot of input in all these things I'm throwing out, and, and Dan too, and. I'm not, uh, I spent time on Zoom with Jason. I'm not just making this all up by myself.
Yeah, right.
Well, I just have, I have to understand, like, I'm just not, like, I can't just.
It's easy to spend taxpayers' money, but it's hard to cut it once it's, you know, trying to do, very hard. I've noticed that since.
Well, and, and the increase that we have, like, you keep saying, oh, it's increased this percent or whatever, those are increases that, like, we didn't, can't, can't fix. It's company and the, the V R F and the things that we can't, there's things you can't get rid of.
I think this year was tough. I think the next couple of years might be really tough.
You know, these, these budgets have been so flat funded for so, so many years, that, you know, it's depleted a lot of our.
Sorry, it's six seventy-two, five fifty for reserves, with the new numbers.
Can I have that again?
Uh, no, come on.
Yeah, until these savings accounts go back to where they're supposed to be, these capital accounts, so we're not, you know, scraping, it's gonna be a long time.
Six ninety-seven, five fifty for reserves.
Six ninety?
Six nine seven, five fifty.
And what effect does that have on mil rate?
I want, just a second. So right now, you're two oh nine, seven twenty.
That's what I got to.
Yeah, so I think I'd be happy with that.
There you go.
There we go.
So do you wanna amend your motion?
So you got, so you motioned on the capital budget?
Well, she's already made a motion to discuss the numbers. She now just has to amend her motion to include the actual, the figure values we came up with.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to add to the capital purchase and reserve budget. Forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars for the emergency generator, two hundred thousand dollars for grader repair, forty-three thousand dollars, seven fifty, uh, for the sidewalk match. That's not actually an addition, it's just a change. I'm gonna change the roof number to fifty thousand, and we're gonna throw twenty-five thousand into public works and twenty-five thousand into the fire department. That everything?
All right.
That is my motion.
Well, do we have a second? All in favor?
I'm gonna stay from this one again, because it does contain fire department.
Gary, are you, are you coming up with, uh?
I have the same number she is.
Okay.
Right, two oh nine, seven twenty.
And we have an overlay in case we mess it up.
Okay.
Hopefully, we still have the revenue.
Yeah, we've been.
And I'm gonna, just to make a note, I was gonna abstain from the ambulance department, because my daughter-in-law was looking to work there, but that's, I think that's a then, I don't know if that's even happening, so that's why I'm still involving myself.
So, would you run motion? We have a second, right?
I said.
We already voted?
We, we're good.
We vote? What time is it?
All right.
Sorry.
So now I'm gonna make a motion to.
So, no, we need to bring that to the, to, to.
Oh, yeah.
What was that total dollar amount? Sorry, I had to step out. You guys may have been sitting here too long.
To the capital?
Yes.
You want, give them up?
What was the amount they just approved?
Six ninety-seven, five fifty was the amount that Gary just gave us earlier.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the amount you guys just motioned to raise. So, I have a motion from the finance committee to recommend a capital purchase in the reserves like this, six hundred ninety-seven dollars, five hundred and fifty dollars.
I made a motion to accept that.
All over the favor?
So Lori, I'll make the motion for the revenue, since I originally made the change for the ambulance, just so I, I'll, if you don't mind.
No, I'm here.
So I'll make the motion to accept the revenue as is with the change of two hundred fifty thousand instead of two hundred thousand, uh, coming from the ambulance.
We haven't, okay. Uh, just wanna say that if you're thinking about bringing in the, uh, repurposing the, uh, uh, town office study money.
Feasibility study.
Then that's, that's revenue in here that we need to plug in there.
Okay.
So.
So feasibility study, what was the number?
Twenty?
Thirty-one.
Okay.
I scribbled on it there, but... These are the account numbers and the amounts, this said five-oh-four before I scribbled it out.
Okay, so that would be, in addition, we have the the twenty thousand from the feasibility study, the fifty-seven-sixty from the health, and the five-oh-four from the one-fifty.
How's that work though, those aren't audited numbers yet, are they?
Those are verificans?
Yeah.
They are?
They haven't changed, so...
The five-oh-four from what we gave this from last?
There's been no activity in them since last year.
Okay.
I gotta create some new lines here, but what, what's the bottom number there, so I can just... We'll, we'll make note of it, and I need to, I don't wanna change them.
Twenty-six thousand, it's on there, twenty-six thousand.
Two-sixty-four plus the extra fifty thousand that I quit, so it's an extra seventy-six-two-sixty-four.
Say it again, seven?
So, we had the twenty-six-two-sixty-four from those three accounts, plus the additional fifty thousand on top of the two-hundred thousand that I originally asked for. So, that's an addition of seventy-six-two-sixty-four.
Fifty for the ambulance, me?
Yeah, fifty for the ambulance plus twenty-six...
That's already here, so...
Okay.
The number that I gave you there is inclusive of that already, the only thing that's changing the number right now...
Is twenty-six-two-sixty-four.
Is twenty-six-two-sixty-four, okay. So, I'm gonna, I don't wanna blow up my spreadsheet here, cause I, I've done that before, you're not fine? So, let me figure it out, uh, on my summary sheet. Twenty-six-two-sixty-four?
Yep.
So, that's two-thirty-five-nine-eighty-four, net increase.
So, any discussion of that?
Did someone second that?
I'll, I'll second.
So, any questions?
My only question about the revenue budget is, in all this time, have you ever seen, and I'm a little worried right now about this day, them come out with a projection, because this number here that we're going on, we're doing all this fancy stuff with, is based on this projection that their revenue forecasting committee gave us, have you ever seen that change?
I've never seen their revenue sharing figure come in less than what they projected, what they've told us. And so, in being this late in the game, this late in the season, they gave us a number here in, uh, when was it, a month ago? And so, I don't see that they're going to, uh, live on that, I would be shocked. That's not to say that the school in the past didn't get, back in the early nineties, didn't get all of their education, uh, appropriation, but they got it the year after.
They had a skip a month, one year, we didn't get our June payment, and so, it's like one-twelfth of your revenue was cut.
Right. So...
I mean, we're, we're all working with that figure, you know, so for them to come back behind the scenes and throw us a curveball would really throw us way off, off the mark.
You're more secure now, cause we're so late in the year doing it versus when you were prior, you, you really were on a, you know?
Okay, I just wanna make sure that comes out here, that this is, you know?
Yeah.
So, you, you vote done, you ask?
So, we are ready for a vote, all, all in favor? Polls? Just carry, it's all yours, Miss.
What was your final number on that one again, cause it was that four-fourteen-one?
It was that figure again? So, we added an additional twenty-six-two-sixty-four to that number.
Yeah. So, your revenue number, your rental revenue number, uh, I'll, I'll print all these out, updated for you guys.
Yep.
Send them out as soon as I can.
You can read your scribbling.
Hopefully, somebody's taking good minutes.
Yeah.
So, right now, it's looking like our revenue is, uh... Two, two-million-one-twenty-six-four-oh-two.
That's what's proposed.
No, that was the number that was there before.
Yeah, that's what's proposed.
Oh, you know what, yeah, I, I didn't, I, I didn't...
You don't have that line or something?
Yeah, I didn't have those lines, and that's why it's not there, so take that number plus the twenty-six...
So, it should be twenty-two-oh-two-six-six-six.
Yeah.
Twenty-one, two-million-one-fifty-two.
Well, no, cause the, in our sheets don't have the extra fifty thousand.
Oh, is it?
So, it's two, two-million-two-hundred-two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-six dollars.
Okay.
And no sense.
So, I would take a motion from the finance committee to recommend the revenue budget at two-million-two-hundred-two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-six dollars. I made a, uh, second. Second, second. Are all voters in favor?
There we go. What else do we have? Considered any other business? Do you have any other business to consider?
Unless you're buying any proper, I got nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, oh, really?
Hey, Dan, here.
How many beans do you have left? Are you, uh, are you happy with that?